I call the City Council, meeting to order. And we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance led by Steve Holmes from the West Jordan Fire Department.
The audience please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening. First is a recognition by APWA to Wendell Rigby for receiving the 2018 Award, APWA Employee of the Year, David Brickie and Dave Murphy.
Okay, I have with me here Marv Allen from the American Public Works Association. And I'll let him make a quick introduction about the award and then I'll say a little bit of what the reasoning behind the award for Wendell was. Thanks.
We appreciate this opportunity to come and make this presentation to Wendell. In fact, Wendell, would you come forward? We're going to make you stand here while we talk about you. In any rate, I currently serve on the board for the American Public Works Association in Utah. We also have with us our chapter president, Ed Ruffner. Appreciate him coming. And each year during Public Works Week in May, the American Public Works Association sponsors a fundraising activity where we raise funds for scholarships for individuals that are pursuing an education in public works. But also, we have a series of awards that we present. And this year, one of the most prestigious awards is the APWA Member of the Year Award. And Wendell Rigby was nominated for this award. And I want to turn the time over to Dave for just a minute so he can identify why he was nominated and then I'll present the award.
Wendell Rigby has done a lot for the profession here for public works in West Jordan City. He worked for the city for 14 years and 12 of that as the Public Works Director. He was instrumental in helping us procure funding for and telling the council and letting the council know the needs of the public work staff and having a new building built for public works and was instrumental in also implementing new programs and new policies that would help serve the public better and bringing all that forward at a place and a time during the Great Recession that was really, really difficult for the city. And keeping public work staff onboard and engaged and working through the tough times and helping us basically do our jobs the way they need to be done for the public. And he was always had an eye to helping staff and helping the public get those services that they demanded at a reasonable price, time, and place to get the job done that needs to be done for the public. And so that's why I nominated him.
And I've been around long enough that I've known Wendell for many more years before you came to West Jordan City. But Wendell's extremely well-deserving of this award and I'd like to present this to him and congratulate him.
First of all, I never expected anything like this. I retired two months ago, so I thought I was done. But I wanted to also invite my wife up. Liz, would you come up here? Shake all these hands. But I appreciate the opportunity to have spent my career in public works. It's been a rewarding career and I feel that like most good employees, the one thing that I did want to do was try to make a difference. And I hope that I did that. Thank you.
This is one where you'll want to sit up in your chairs. Mayor and council, as you know, the city's, excuse me, sponsors a victim advocate program. And by law, they're required to come and make a statistical report on their activities to you. So that's what we're here tonight to do. And before I have them come forward to do that, I'd just like to introduce you to our three victim advocates. I know some of you know them, some of you may not have met them, but we have Cecilia Budd, Luanne Sisim, and Eric Montanez. And I wanted to, they're going to talk to you here in a minute, but I asked them to tell me, to send me something that I could tell you about them that you may not know that they, they would like me to, I call it bragging on them. Before I do that, though, I want to show you something. This is the Utah Code of Criminal Procedure. And if you open up one of these books, it is 12-point type and it's full of statutes and case law. If any of you have ever been the defendant or the plaintiff in a case, you'll know how confusing court can be and sometimes seemingly illogical. Take that and put yourself in that situation when you're being now. You've been the victim of a crime and how it might feel to have to maneuver this. I've worked with victim advocates for many, many years and I can affirmatively represent to you that our three victim advocates are as good as any I have worked with in any city. They're very knowledgeable, remarkably compassionate. They understand this probably better than I do. And we're very fortunate to have them working here in the city. Let me talk first about Cecilia. She's the director of our group. In 1994, she took a trip to Honduras with her family and decided she wanted to do something in life that would make a difference. So she came back and saw shortly thereafter an announcement in the paper for the need for victim advocate here in the city that was starting a new program. So she started as a volunteer and in 1997 was hired part-time and a year later, full-time. She has 15 grandchildren, ages 20 to 2 years. And here's what she said, I love this. "They said if I knew what it felt like to be a grandma, I would have done that first instead of having kids." I thought that was a great comment. Luanne Sisim has been a resident in here in the city for 31 years. She has seven children and 26 grandchildren, was a volunteer for eight years, and then obtained her master's, her degree in social work and was hired by West Jordan. And then finally, Eric, our young man, is our newest victim advocate here. He worked for the Salt Lake City Police Department in their records unit for 10 years and decided that not only did he like law enforcement, but he wanted to do something that was more engaging with people and had a particular interest in gang activity, not as a participant, but of how to deal with it in society. And he found a volunteer position at the UPD and got his feet wet in that realm and then eventually made his way here to West Jordan and now works for us as a member of the Victim Advocates Unit. He said that he loves watching movies, spending times with his kids and hanging out with his family, and loves to read true crime books. I'm glad he didn't say, "Well, I get true crime books." I'm not sure what that means, other than if they're true stories. Anyway, I'd like to turn just a few minutes to Cecilia and her group and they'll present to you their report, the statistical report.
Is that ready by any chance?
Oh, it's me, sorry.
Hurry up, we only have three minutes. Okay, our mission statement is advocates should provide services to the community for crisis intervention and advocacy for victims of violent crimes. What we do, we assist in filing crime victims' reparation, maybe transport to the police station, hospital, family resource centers, help them file protective orders, take them to a safe place, and sometimes occasionally we even take them to a hotel for safety. We assist in obtaining police reports because sometimes they need it to file a protective We keep the victim well-informed of what's going on with their case. We, Luanne is the lucky one, they attend to all the hearings of the cases, the criminal case. We all attend to hearings for protective orders and we give them support, their support, and we explain to them what the process is. We assist in preparing the victim witness for court. Like he said, if it wasn't for our understanding what needs to be done, people would be last. And it's scary to go in front of a judge. We try to tell them the judge is another, just another guy that's interested in hearing their story. And so sometimes they calm down that way. During the trial, we stay with the victim or the witnesses and explain the whole procedure and then we answer all the questions they have. We try to anyway. Oh, I don't know if you can see that.
Oh, that's tiny. We'll see if I can see that.
Yeah.
Okay, we have served 240 males, 739 females.
And these are people that we have so far helped them in the last six months.
For a total of 979. 859 are domestic cases, 17 are assaults, five are sexual offenses, 15 child abuse, one elder abuse, 58 stalking and harassment cases. This year, we have had no survivors of homicides.
Fortunately, we haven't had any homicide or DUIs or victims of DUIs.
We've had 15 protective order violations, two robberies, zero kidnappings.
We almost had the other day one.
Yeah, we had a. 23 of them have been multiple victimizations and is that 50? Victims with limited English proficiency, 20 immigration issues assistance, 37 on-scene crisis reports, 279 court-supported protective order hearings, 970 follow-up calls, 500 victims were discussed in our hot list meetings, 1,833 phone calls.
And these phone calls, a lot of them, there were victims that they didn't answer the phone, but we continue calling them until we can get ahold of them, so.
882 messages. We've sent 165 texts and had 188 in-person contacts. Our total volunteer hours are 672.
These were hours the volunteers helped us maintaining the emergency line that we have. We answer the phone 24/7 and they also go out on calls. This one's yours, buddy.
If you guys are interested in volunteering with West Jordan, feel free to get ahold of one of us or Cecilia. That's how I started was volunteering and it's really great. You learn a lot. There's our number right at the bottom, 224-991. It's always on call, so whenever you call, one of us will pick up.
Do you have any, any questions?
Councilmember Lamb has a question.
So going back to those numbers, is that just West Jordan or is that Salt Lake County?
Just West Jordan.
Okay. I mean, it seems pretty high, but if it is, that's not good.
No, it's not. We, we have roughly between 1,600 to 1,800 domestic alone every year. And, and some of those are not arrest. They're maybe verbal, but we take care of verbals too because we believe in early intervention and so, so that we can get them started to, you know, to think about safety.
Okay. And that's, I'm grateful that, you know, we have this service to help those people. It's just alarming that it is that high and obviously, we, we as a city and I'm sure you, you as well would like to see those numbers go down.
Exactly, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
But unfortunately, it's been going up since I, I started it 20 years ago because we used to have half the amount of people and so now we have double the amount of cases.
And I know you don't have numbers for other cities, but are the other cities seeing the same type of numbers?
Yeah.
West Valley, South Jordan?
They do, they have a pretty, domestics is probably the number one highest number in every city.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Don't seem to be. Thank you very much for the service that you provide up there for our community.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting us have, have us here.
Rob, did you want to add any more to that?
Yeah, just one comment. I think Cecilia left on your, in front of your microphones there, a couple of brochures. These are pamphlets that the victim advocates, as well as the police department, make available to victims and also to parents of children who have been victimized. And as you can see, there's quite a resource that's been developed over the years and put in place, not only citywide, but countywide, for individuals who experience this. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that. It kind of gives you an idea of the breadth of, of the work they do.
Thank you. And thank you again. We'll now move to our communications and start with our...
I'll leave them here in case somebody wants, wants to take one.
Okay. We'll move to our communications and start with our city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, I'll just update you with letting you know that we've been already getting organized, getting prepared to answer questions and be ready to address the issues that will obviously be a major concern on August 14th in the Truth and Taxation Hearing. We're assigning responsibilities, getting information. As you get closer to that date, we'll try to share information, continue to keep you advised as to how things are developing. If there is something that you want specifically addressed, please shoot me an email so we can prepare for it. But I think based on our budget process, I know what our responsibility is as far as explaining what those green sheets requests and items are. So we'll be getting ready for that and be prepared to explain to both you and the community what it is our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from our city attorney this evening?
Nothing other than what's on the agenda for later on, Mayor.
Thank you. So move over to staff and start with Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Travis, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Park staff is ramping up for the Western Stampede of Veterans Memorial Park. It is from June 30th to July 4th. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Bill?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Brian?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Dave Peterson?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
Nancy Shepherd? Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll go to the council reports and start with Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I just want to thank Parks for taking care of some tree issues on 48th West that I had noticed. And so I just want to thank you for that. Other than that, I'm just looking forward to the Western Stampede, so I have nothing else.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say a couple of things. First thing I want to say is just a clarification. As the entire council knows, and I'm sure the entire city, maybe the whole county and who knows who else, I am adamantly, personally adamantly opposed to the sales tax issue that we've seen go on through the county and through other city councils over the past few weeks. This council did not vote. We didn't take a position. We didn't have a meeting. It was never agendized. So I recognize this council did not take an official position. I have a very personal position and I am a member of the council, but I just need to make abundantly clear for anybody who's picked up on my remarks on social media, newspaper, I've talked to several reporters who've called me. I am in no way speaking for the council when I do that. And everybody up here is free to talk to any reporter they want to. And nobody speaks for the council except for the mayor, and that's after the council has voted. The council's not positioned on anything, no one speaks for the council, me included, lest there be any misperceptions. So I just want to make that abundantly clear, that when I speak, I speak for me. I am a council member. If somebody writes that I'm a council member next to my name when I've spoken, it's true, I am. I can't do much about that, the way somebody chooses to report on that. But I just want to make, make it very clear that I recognize that my role is not, not a spokesman for the city. And I'll leave it at that for, for right now. I am personally adamantly opposed to the way the county and the state handled the SB 130 sales tax issue, but I'll leave that there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock?
First, Mr. Brickie, I hope our next meeting to discuss the budget is not August 14th because that won't work for me. So I hope we're planning on having something with the council prior to that date.
We can. The August 14th date is the date that is set by the county.
So before that date, I would hope that our council would want to get together, gentlemen, and have a discussion. Did you hear that? I think it's an excellent idea. We should have a work meeting, actually. That'd be a great thing. And in the past, I've actually heard people that sit up here say they'd do that for the budget. So please, because we cannot adequately discuss what we need to on the August 14th meeting.
Yes, ma'am. We'll schedule a work session.
Just won't happen. And I want to thank the streets department. When Bangeter Overpass came to 9,000 South in our city, our neighborhood and the neighborhood by our house worked with the then-mayor, Ralph, who helped us to be able to get our streets repaired. And they've been doing that and they've been doing a nice job. So thank you to the streets department for coming and, and helping us out in that way and for the work that they do today. I don't know about the rest of you out there, but working with asphalt probably wouldn't have been my number one thing to do. Little warm, so thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
And Councilmember Burton?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. First of all, I want to mention the Western Stampede that Travis already mentioned. You probably saw the carnivals up there already as Brown's Carnival is doing that and that's really exciting. They're a fantastic carnival group. We've had them the last couple of years and it'll be great. That starts Saturday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then all the rodeo events come on those. I'll be out there every day. Come look and find me. I'll keep the water. Anyway, it's the biggest event that West Jordan puts on every year. It's coming up, so let's look forward to that. Our communities are strongly aware, the LDS Church is choosing to discontinue their sponsoring of Boy Scouts. And as they do that, there's a whole lot of youth within the West Jordan area that may be looking for some units to, to continue scouting with. And so what I would like to do, the council would be obliged to do so, I would like to schedule a time where we could discuss that, the sponsoring Boy Scout units. And if there's nobody opposed, I'll just pick an agenda time and put it on our agenda where we can discuss the opportunities and how that could be done and the city could be a sponsor of the Boy Scouts of America in West Jordan.
Great topic for a work session.
Great topic for the council, yes. So other than the one dollar, is there any others who are opposed to that, having a discussion about that? Thank you. I will proceed to do that. Also, this past summer, when I went to the Leagues Meeting down in St. George, they had some bike shares that they explained to us and showed to us. And St. George has a bicycle share program there. It doesn't cost the city any money. They use sponsors to do it and another organization takes care of it, so it's no cost to the city, but there's a benefit that the city gets from that. And I like that idea and I'm thinking that might be something good here. And then was at our last meeting with the Jordan River Commission. And Jordan River would also like to do bike shares. Salt Lake City has it, but there aren't any. Salt Lake City has it, but there aren't any for the Jordan River itself. They want to put them in different locations along the Jordan River. And I'm thinking that'd be great over at Gardner Village. People could start there or end there and bring people into West Jordan. And maybe we could expand beyond that. So if the council would be okay, I would like to have some information brought together and present it to a council and see what it would take to do a bike share program in West Jordan. The one that the commission is going to do will actually cost money because they don't have sponsors, as many sponsors for it. But we would, could work something on that as well. And they'll have to stop without that. But I think it'd be something worth looking into. Any objections to those? Thank you. I will proceed with that as well. And then look forward to seeing you guys this weekend at the Western Stampede. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And today, uh, Paul Brockbank, our, uh, from the fire department and myself had an opportunity to go down and, and spend a few minutes at Channel Four uh, to talk about the upcoming events here in the park and the rodeo and the carnival. And it was really kind of a fun and exciting time to be able to do that. Take a few minutes to, to talk to the, the community as a whole out there on television. Seeing with that, completing our, our staff and council, uh, comments, I'm going to open this up for citizens' comments to speak. We'll start with those that have signed up. And just to remember that you have three minutes to express your feelings. And so I'll start with, if I can read this, Jeff, uh, is it Jeff Seltz? Uh, please come forward, Jeff. Did I say that right? Oh, I'm sorry.
It works. No one's ever said it right. Uh, just want to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jeff Seitz. I'm with Extreme Staffing and Payroll. I'm also a member of the West Jordan Chamber and one of the ambassadors. I just like to take time. Um, my business is actually in Murray, but we do a lot of work here in West Jordan. Uh, the West Jordan Chamber has actually worked with Economic Development to, um, to be able to bring our business here to West Jordan. So we were able to look at a spot. Uh, we were having difficulty actually finding a location to put our, our business. I spoke to the West Jordan Chamber, uh, Asia and Rick and uh, the Economic Development Committee. And next thing you know, I, I got a call from one of the, uh, real estate places to be able to put our place. We were able to sign an LOI and bring our business closer to the chamber over there by Basa. So uh, that's something that we've experienced well. So we are going to be a member of, of West Jordan. Our company is. Another thing I want to talk about is, uh, my business, we do a lot of recruiting. Uh, we do job placements for a lot of the companies here in West Jordan. Since I've been a member, which has been about a little over seven months now, we were able to increase our business over thirty-three percent just from working with the West Jordan Chamber. And that, just an increase in my business, we'll be able to help other businesses here. Danin, Snugs, businesses like that. And by our, that, that relationship between West Jordan Chamber and myself, we're able to help those businesses be able to make money as well. Because if they didn't have the staff, they wouldn't obviously be making any money at that point in time. One of the other things that I've seen working with the West Jordan Chamber is, um, being able to have time to, to interact with a lot of the businesses here and hearing that, what they have to say about the West Jordan Chamber. For a couple of instances, I have been able to talk to a couple of businesses that were, were struggling in sales or struggling being able to get to events. And I was able to communicate with, with the West Jordan president and the staff, and they were able to go out and get them connected with the right people to be able to increase their business and and to be able to go to meetings. For instance, we have a sales meeting, uh, an event that's put on at the West Jordan Chamber. And we've had businesses be able to be, send their employees there to be able to learn how to sell better to increase revenue. A couple of events that I've been able to participate in is a First Friday event, which we hold here, you know, through the West Jordan Chamber. And just through that event alone, I've been able to interact with businesses and, and, uh, help them out just by my position as a, an ambassador. A couple of the other things I, I like to talk about is, is, also as I'm talking to these businesses, they've expressed great gratitude to the, to the chamber. I've been able to talk to other businesses that want to join the West Jordan Chamber because they say that the West Jordan Chamber is more organized. The events they put on are done correctly and there's more of them, so they were able to participate in them. You know, I, I, I'd just like to say that my experience with the West Jordan Chamber has been a- amazing. Um, I loved every minute of it. My company itself deals with a lot of the chambers up in throughout Idaho, um, and, and Utah itself. And my company, the owner of the company actually came down. He said he's never ever seen a chamber like this one. He's actually advocated time for me to be able to participate in more events because he says the benefit we get from it is, it's immensely. We've used marketing firms, we've used, uh, other sales reps, and I've been able to increase my business, like I said, over thirty-three percent just by my, you know, chamber membership. So, that's about all I have to say. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Corey Payne?
Thank you. My name's Corey Payne. I work for Nesco Resource. And I'm also a member of the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce and speaking to Item, is it nine D? Which is on your agenda later this evening. Uh, I'm also an ambassador with the, uh, the West Jordan Chamber. Uh, much like Jeff, our business is, is throughout the valley and a good majority of it is in West Jordan. In short term, while we're trying to find suitable office, uh, space within the community, I commute into West Jordan and what has allowed me to be connected to the business community here has been the West Jordan Chamber. And it's, it's far more than a, a social event. Uh, this chamber, in my experience, based on other chambers that I belong to, is, they're interested in seeing that our business succeeds and that any resources that the chamber can provide for us as, as a business member of the chamber, that they're willing to, to bring those resources to us and assist us and connect us and whatever we need to do. So I hope that you as, as council members and mayor will, uh, see this as a valuable use of your city resources and continue to fund this into the future because it's certainly a benefit for myself, our business, and our customers within West Jordan. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Please come forward and state your contact information.
Hi, my name is Megan Jakes. My phone number is eight oh one, eight eight five, zero nine three zero. And my email is dev, D E V, at C J C S L C dot org. So I just want to thank you guys all for letting me be here and thank you for considering this proposal to waive fees for the Seventh Annual Day of Hope Car Show. Um, we are a part of the Salt Lake County Children's Justice Center and we are a comfortable, child-friendly atmosphere where child, where children come and are interviewed about the different abuse processes. So we help children and their families go through the legal system. So this is, um, one of our biggest fundraisers. Like I said, it's our seventh annual one. And it's a, it's an opportunity for the public to come and learn about the CJC and also have a fun, free event to attend. It also gives us the opportunity to raise funds that are desperately needed to help children and their families. So, um, also it helps the children and know that there's somebody in the community that cares about them and that takes care of them. So children and victims of abuse are more likely to come forward. Is there any questions? And I also have some postcards if anybody wants them about our, about the car show and the activities that are going to be there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think what I'd like to do, if there's anyone else that would like to speak, uh, just come up and speak, but give the clerk a paper with your name and contact information so that it's, because we are live streaming our meetings now, it's probably better if you just handed the clerk something with your name and phone number on it. So if there's an issue that comes up that you want to talk about, that a member of staff could get back to you. That's the intent. And so if, if, I, I think we might want to change, make that a policy change here so that uh, people that do want to come up and speak simply give that information to our clerk rather than stating it from the lectern. If that's, is that okay with you, city manager?
That's fine. I'd ask also to direct the clerk to strike the last email address and phone number that was provided.
With that being said, I think what I can do in the future is I'll put together a sign-up sheet and document and just leave it on the lectern so that if people haven't previously signed up, they can provide their information there.
And, and in some cases, we might need to have somebody out there that can work with them to get them to fill it out. So. So with that said, is there anyone else then that would wish to come and speak to council tonight? Please come forward.
Would you like my name and number?
Uh, on a piece of paper that you can hand to the clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Nancy Franklin and I am the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce here in West Jordan. Um, this year, as a seated chairperson, I have been working with the board on a succession plan. Our goal is to create a strong board of directors that can actually help govern the chamber and all of their activities. Some key activities for us, and we're strengthening two key areas, which is our economic development along with our government actions. It's not where we want it to be and we're still moving forward. And we see it to be a vital part of what we do in our, in the community of West Jordan. We also know that another component is our relationship with the city, with you as the city council members and the mayor as we represent and speak with the businesses, both here today, as well as those that we want to bring into the city. What we're committed to do is be collaborative, working with you and working with businesses. So there's definitely a public policy, uh, platform that we're working to establish as we continue to strengthen these committees and work collaboratively with the business and city council. We'll continue to govern so that the goal, the overarching goal is that West Jordan is a city that businesses want to come to. And we provide a quality of life, not only for thriving, but for growth. And so I thank you for your time and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council? Please come forward. And you can just leave the paper on the lectern and we'll get it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Nowell. I'm an owner at Big Dog Pawn on Redwood Road. Uh, we've been there for twenty years. I just wanted to just speak for a moment about the Chamber of Commerce. We have been in business twenty years, but it's only been in the last couple of years that we've actually been members of the Chamber of Commerce. And our goal is to be able to give back to the community. By being, um, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm a volunteer ambassador. And it allows me to work with other businesses within the city. It allows me to get to know them so that we have an avenue to, um, give back. Uh, I wanted to, uh, now, uh, talk about a couple of the things that the chamber does. We, um, I'm just going to read this. I'm a little nervous. The Western, um, Chamber promotes economic development by targeting specific industries that are prevalent in the city of West Jordan and creating specific programs and services to help businesses in those areas to grow, expand, and be more successful. Such as, um, we, uh, work on organizing the man- a manufacturer's forum where we get to, um, get the manufacturers within the city together so that they can, um, we connect them with, uh, workforce development resources. We help them share best practices, what works for one manufacturing company, so that they can all take the best of those qualities. And so that they can also connect with the community. Another one of the things that we work on is, um, we organize dentist resources. We, um, in looking at, we have a lot of dentists in West Jordan and we found one of their concerns is debt, to become a dentist is expensive. So one of the things that we help them do is, um, providing, get businesses together that can provide discounts to them so that they can be a viable entity in our, in our city. And, um, we offer them support and we help promote them through various media outlets so that, um, they can help, we as a community can help them so they in turn help us. So anyway, I would just like to thank you for your time and, um, appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Leland Hawks. I am the chair-elect of the Board of Directors for the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce. May it please the council. This very moment is a crucial time for the city of West Jordan. We are at a tipping point. West Jordan is poised to be the very fat, to be the fastest-growing city in Utah and therefore the epicenter of economic growth and development for the state. I can say with one hundred percent conviction, in order for us as a city to succeed and not flounder in a time of unprecedented growth and expansion, we as a Chamber of Commerce and Board of Directors are keenly aware that a spirit of collaboration and teamwork need to abide in a mutually beneficial relationship with the city and its council. Only through fostering a relationship of innovation, cooperation, and collaboration can we work together to achieve the full potential that the city of West Jordan has to offer. When one backs up to take a look at the two organizations, I believe there is no greater marriage for success. Pair an open-minded, passionate, and hard-working city council with an innovative, passionate, and hard-working Chamber of Commerce, and any obstacle that might have stood in our way will be easily overtaken. To adopt any other course of action would be to the detriment of West Jordan City, its businesses, and its citizens. I understand the council's desire to quantify the return on investment it makes to the Chamber of Commerce. I am here to tell you, it is simply not quantifiable. We will never know the impact that our conversations have on an individual or a business owner. We will never know how much future business is generated by a connection we are the architect of. We will never be able to quantify the value of working with our city council to affect change to public policy and therefore promote growth in our city. All I can tell you is that it is there. An intrinsic value will always be inherent when people come together for the greater good. In this case, the economic development and growth of West Jordan City. The Chamber of Commerce holds a different value to all of us. There are those of us that not yet know the value of the Chamber of Commerce. To those individuals, we have failed you up until this point. The burden of proof is on us, the chamber. I am here to pledge to you all who do not yet see our value that we will work tirelessly alongside you to show you our value. Counsel, I look forward to building our relationship and to the work we will share. Remember that the Chamber of Commerce is here to help you to provide information to aid and to ensure the success of economic growth and development in the city of West Jordan. Thank you all.
Good evening, council. Um, some of you know me. I'm Angela Waterbury. I am with North American Printing. I also do quite a bit with our city events committees and our stampede committees. And I'm also a member of the West Jordan Chamber. I was, I joined last year, or over a year ago, to be a member with the chamber, with the local business that I was working for here in West Jordan. I have since switched positions and now work for a company that's actually in West Valley. However, I chose to become a, stay as a member of the West Jordan Chamber because of their value, because of the amount of support that they provide to businesses throughout the valley, um, amongst many other things. I want to cover with you just really quickly, um, some of the events and things that we do as a chamber to help promote the quality of life here in the city of West Jordan. So we have, we are hosting a health fair. It has almost over four hundred participants. We provide free flu shots, cholesterol screenings, glucose tests, blood pressure testing, immunizations, mammograms, massages, and we're able to provide massages, and we're able to provide from all of those businesses as well, which is over that 400 participants. We're able to provide materials to other members and to the members of our community that interact with these businesses. We work very closely with Jordan Valley Medical Center, who is a huge supporter of the chamber. We also are hosting an automotive event. We have a ton of automotive industries and businesses here in West Jordan, and we're holding a event on July 28th called Motor Madness, which will allow for the community to come out, meet these individuals that can help them with their repairs, or anything that they might need that's automotive-related, as well as touch a truck. I don't know if you know what touch a truck is, but it's putting these kids and people on, or even adults for that matter, you know, learning this blind spots on a semi. So when they're driving down our roads, they're not impeding other drivers, giving them an opportunity to learn what it is to be on maybe some of our ambulants and fire trucks and things of that nature. So they aren't afraid of those things, they're not afraid to call our 911s, but they're also respectful and get out of their way, you know, when they're coming down the roads. But we want to make sure that people understand what these vehicles are and what they do for citizens of our community. We're working closely this year with BACA, which is Bikers Against Child Abuse, so we're working very closely in that manner. We have a Jeep show, we're doing Stuff a Bus, and the donations to Stuff a Bus is, our people are coming and they're bringing school donations, so school supplies that we're going to be able to donate to those individuals and to that function. So again, my name is Angela Waterbury. I'm grateful to be a part of the chamber. Thank you.
I know that there are many that want to probably support the chamber, so I'm, and I know that there's probably a lot that still would like to talk, but what I'd like to ask, those that are here in support of the chamber, would you please stand, so the council members can see this? Thank you. So we appreciate you coming and supporting the chamber, and are very appreciative to be able to hear from you. But I do have a question. Is there someone that would like to speak to someone, to something besides the support of the chamber? Now that you've all been recognized, and we appreciate that. So is there anyone else that would like to speak to another issue? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing. Excuse me, public comment. Thank you. It was not a public hearing. And we'll move to consent items. Are there any consent items that council members wish to have polled tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to poll. Six A, please.
Six A, okay. Councilmember Anderson.
I'll move to approve consent. Six B is in Bravo.
Second. Councilmember Jacob. So we have a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Seeing none.
Mayor Wright.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Okay, we'll go back to Councilmember Burton for six B.
So I have a question on this one, if I may, under the background discussion. It says, it says that the project is at 3,200 West and 8,900 South. This project is needed to supply water to a reservoir located on the Old Bingham Highway. So I'm just wondering, is that correct? 3,200 West, 8,900 South, and then the Old Bingham Highway, which isn't near that address?
That is incorrect. It is on 3,200 West.
Okay, Dave, would you like to address that question?
The staff report was a little unclear on that. The reservoir is on Old Bingham Highway. The position of the PRV is down on 3,200 West, but it is taking water from the Jordan Aqueduct line that's at a higher pressure that can feed the Old Bingham Highway tank that's in Zone Two.
So it's feeding uphill to it?
Correct.
So that is correct address then?
Apologize for the interruption there.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification on that. I have no objection, so I'd be willing to move to adopt, approve resolution 18-113.
Councilmember Lamb.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion to the motion. Seeing none, then let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Mayor Wright.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
We'll move to our public hearings. Public hearing item 8A, receive public input, consider for approval, resolution 18-115 regarding a waiver of fees for the Children's Justice Center car show at Veterans Memorial Park, August 11th, 2018. Travis Johnson.
Yes, Mayor.
Would you like to tell us about that?
Okay, sorry. The Children's Justice Center is requesting a waiver of fees for their 70th Annual Day of Hope Car Show. The information is presented to you in the staff report, and Megan Cox is here tonight to answer any questions you may have about the event.
Okay, are there any questions that, any questions for staff first? And seeing none, would the applicant like to speak about this? Okay, applicant doesn't want to speak, so I will open the public hearing for public comment.
Jaylen Thomas. I would hope that you would do the waiver for the Child's Justice Center. I volunteer as a victim advocate for Unified Police Department, and their role, just imagine if you were a victim of a major, like a big crime. Times that by 100 on how your, how a child's gonna feel. They work hand-in-hand with prosecution, our law enforcement, even victim advocates. If you've ever had an opportunity to go to one of their trainings, I mean, it's usually to prosecutors and victim advocates, but just about a month ago, I was at their Child's Justice Center Symposium, and that was three days of all different types of issues on child abuse. I, I leave mentally drained. I, in fact, I guess I could teeter on saying I was traumatized, but that's, that's just what it's there to do. But these kids are dealing with things that, anything that they can do to help their program move forward, get money into there, it's an investment in our kids, just like our victim advocate program, just like our police department, just like our prosecutors, anybody that deals with crime. It's an important piece of the puzzle for us all to work together. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this issue? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question or two for staff. The bulk of this fee waiver, what about 2,500 of the 3,900, is for a police canine demonstration and a fire apparatus display. I just wanted to know a little bit more about what those are, what, what are we, I mean, I get what a police canine demonstration, I guess, is, but, you know, is it six vehicles at $55 per hour, at six hours? You know, just a little more detail as far as what that entails from, from police and the fire department.
Also, I'll speak in behalf of Travis on this. Generally, this is for the police canine demonstration. I believe it's six hours at $55 an hour, and they have the canines there, and police vehicles there. Fire has their apparatus there. Public Works will sometimes take down their pieces of equipment too, just to kind of show everyone what it is.
Okay, so that's multiple, multiple units, because six times 55 is 300 and something dollars, not, not 1650. Okay. And fire chief?
Yeah, usually it's, I can't recall exactly how many hours, two, three hours?
It says five, but...
Five hours. Usually, we rotate crews in there, so we can fill that with on-duty crews. When I got the request from Naylor Parks, he just wanted to know our hourly fee.
Okay.
Really, there is no fee for that.
And it's done with on-duty?
Yeah, we rotate crews in. They're, they're actually in service. They're, they're there in service.
And then if they got called...
Staging there. If they get a call, then we move another unit.
Oh, if they got called out, they could back up and go?
Yeah, they can still respond. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
My question is for staff. This has been going on for several years. Is it always in West Jordan?
It has been for the last seven years. It's the 70th annual.
But we serve the entire county, correct? Children's Justice Center serves the whole county, right?
And there's a Salt Lake Children's Justice Center just on 2,200 West. So there's a center just right next to it.
Right, I know where the center is.
But it's to benefit all of, it's to benefit both Children's Justice Centers and Salt Lake County.
Do, do we, do we ever, so we always hold it in West Jordan? Yeah, will you come up? Sorry. We always hold it in West Jordan. Do we go over to the Children's Justice Center, or it's just held in West Jordan?
It's just held in West Jordan. This is a great place for a park and a car show, which is, and it's a great family fun event. And when people ask about the Children's Justice Center, it's great to be able to say that we're in West Jordan and we're right here. And so we can teach, we can educate the West Jordan citizens about the Children's Justice Center, and it's just a great location. We love working with West Jordan City, and the park is just beautiful. You couldn't ask for a better place to have a car show.
I support what you do. Don't take it personally when I vote against it. I've found, on my time on the council, that surrounding cities don't charge, and so lots of organizations come to West Jordan. I mean, they do charge, we don't. We waive fees, the other cities don't. So I've found often that, that events are held here, even though they're for the whole county. I support what you do. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. And Brian, I don't know if, or if you can answer this, but typically, what's the attendance? 50 people, 100 people, 1,000 people?
It's pretty well attended. I'd probably say upwards of, I haven't been to one, I didn't go to the one last year, probably upwards of over 1,000 people, I would think.
Over 1,000?
Yeah, it gets, it's, it's well attended. It's a nice car. It's a good car show.
Okay, and that, and so it's not, it's not listed here, but probably some of those people would shop here and eat here, or...
I would think so.
Something along those lines. So there's probably a little bit of an offset on sales tax, or something like that.
I would think so.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. It seems like every time waiver fees comes up, we have these conversations, and, and I'm usually on the side of I'm okay with these things. And just as a council member and as a citizen of West Jordan, I'm grateful that we as a city are able to provide these type of events for these, these things that come up. I know, when you look at these costs here, this is the value of what it would cost if you had to pay for these things, but I don't really think the city is losing $3,960 on a Saturday when this comes to West Jordan. I don't want to see people having to shop around cities to see which city pays less or pays more. So I'm grateful that this is in our city, and I'm grateful that we support it, and that's just my, my thoughts as I, as I look at waiving these fees for this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for choosing to hold this in West Jordan. I've been to this for several years, and it is a fantastic event. There are people from all across the state that bring their cars here. This is a big event. It's publicized very well, and it's fantastic turnout, and it's pretty cool cars here, too. So I'm totally in favor of this opportunity, and I was going to make a motion unless you have something you want to say, Councilman Jacob, that I will wait. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
I just have a question for the applicant, if I may. You mentioned that this is your largest fundraiser. I'm in the fundraising business myself, so just curious, how much do you raise ballpark-wise? I guess you don't necessarily have to give us an exact number if you're not comfortable with it or whatever. About, what does this bring in for the Justice Center?
It depends year to year. Every year, we have different sponsors and different attendants, but usually it's about a $15,000 to $20,000 fundraiser for our charity.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. One question for Parks, while I've got the floor. In the deposit, there's a $500 deposit here. They would normally get that back, right? If they pay it and they're good, I imagine they're good stewards of the park and they're nice and stuff?
Yes, they will get that. It would be refunded if they left the park in good condition.
If they were paying it in past years, if they had paid it, would they have gotten it back?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Because this helps put West Jordan on the map and helps show off our good things and helps bring businesses here and helps our economic development, I move to approve resolution number 18-115, waiving the fees associated with the use of Veterans Memorial Park for the Children's Justice Center Day of Hope Car Show on August 11th, 2018.
And Councilmember Lamb.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, I'll be in support of this motion. I've gone kind of back and forth on these fee waivers in the past. I, I'm very eager to do the fee waiver when it's service in lieu of fees. I think that's, that's a no-brainer. We're just, you know, paying somebody for doing work in our parks or whatever it is. I, I see this as a similar situation. There is a service being provided here that is not necessarily as directly quantifiable as those situations are, like when the baseball league comes and, you know, mows the field or picks up the trash or whatever. But in this case, I believe the service being provided, a lot of the things that Councilmember Burton just mentioned, and the work that the Children's Justice Center does, although I try not to keep, take that into account as much. My family has personally benefited from the Children's Justice Center. We visited there before we moved to West Jordan, so I knew where that was before I lived here. And I'm very grateful it was there, and they helped us quite a bit when we were in a very spot that I wish no family was ever in. So I, I definitely appreciate the work that they do, although I try, again, not to let the worthiness of the cause influence my decision on this. In this case, though, I do believe that the service they're providing by bringing this car show here makes up for the fees. Again, the fire fee, I think we're paying the firefighters anyway. It's just a matter of instead of hanging out at the station, they're hanging out in the park, okay? And same with the, the police fee. I don't think it's, it's really that much that we're giving them, so I'm in favor. I think most of the fees are, probably wouldn't have been charged anyway, so.
Councilmember Whitelock.
And I will be voting against, not because I'm against what you do. I appreciate what you do. I've been a foster parent. I understand what you do. But when I waive a fee, it's not my money that I'm giving away. It's citizens' money. And every time I vote up here, I think about that. And while we probably have, you know, a lot of citizens that would fill the way many of those that share the dais with me do, we also have others that don't. And they're hard for me as well, but I decided to be pretty consistent and just say no. But I very much support the children's justice system. Thank you.
And I will speak in favor of this as well. A little personal privilege here. My wife is an elementary school principal who's worked closely with the Children's Justice Center as a result of the things that she sees and happens in schools, elementary schools with, with children. And I've been to this car show before, and it's just a great, as Councilmember Burton said, it's really a fun activity. The cars there are incredible. I saw the exact car that I, my very first car there last year, 55 Plymouth. And it looked exactly like the one I had. Too bad I still don't have that car. But with that said, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Mayor Wright?
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Vote passes five to one in favor.
Public hearing item eight B, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four regarding a general plan land use map amendment for nine point four seven acres of property from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and rezone from RR point five D rural residential half-acre minimum lots, zone to PRD planned residential development, medium density, senior housing overlay, zone for, senior hu- housing overlay zone, where Brinkerhop Bluffs located seventy-six fifty-three South, thirteen hundred west, Cannon and Company, Gary Cannon, applicant, Scott Langford.
Thanks, Mayor, Council, uh, we'll have Kent Gardner, one of our senior, uh, Kent Page, sorry, uh, one of our senior planners, uh, give a summary of the report, but as he's coming up, just for the benefit of the council and the members of the public that are here, uh, just to explain the process, uh, this particular rezone is a little bit different than, than what we normally see, i- in the fact that, uh, it's a performance-based zone, and, uh, this, uh, public hearing tonight, uh, before the council, um, is basically the, the, the first step in the process. If the council, uh, decides to move ahead with these various amendments proposed, the, uh, the applicant will have to further enhance or develop that concept plan that was attached in your report, provide additional detail, and bring that back through two additional public hearings, uh, one before the planning commission, and then, uh, finally, uh, to the council for final approval. Um, so, the, the concept plan that is required as part of this application i- is to paint a general, uh, picture, establish that framework, and it's a, a good opportunity for, for the citizens to, to comment on that tonight, as well as the council, uh, provide direction and, and clarity to the developer i- if things are lacking or need clarifying, um, and, uh, but we do have two other public hearings, uh, before they're actually entitled, uh, with densities that they're requesting, so with that, I'll turn it over to, to Kent.
Thank you, Scott. I think, uh, since, uh, this rezone application is not as commonly used or applied for as others, as Scott mentioned, I think it can easily be, uh, interpreted, uh, differently or misinterpreted. I liken this process as kind of like dating, perhaps we've gone through when our parents say, you know what, this could be a good thing, why don't you two get together? So the planning commission is met in a public hearing, uh, with the applicant, and staff has reviewed the proposed conceptual plan, and we thought, yeah, this probably could be a good thing. So we've, we've met twice in a public meeting, once was a, a formal public hearing, and, uh, last June twelfth, the planning commission said, yeah, I think this is worthy to pursue, uh, why don't you talk about it with the city council? And in the process, uh, we'll give you some recommendations, why don't you keep working and developing kind of the ideas, the gist of what the purpose of the planned residential development zone is, and the zoning, the senior zoning overlay? So, I, I guess I liken this to that we have, where if the council proceeds to accept a conceptual development plan, it's kind of like saying, well, we'll give you two years, the applicant and the, and the city will have two years in order to make an engagement to be, for, you know, the, the next step for engagement, if you will, uh, with this plan, so with that, I'd just like to give a little general overview, the purpose of the planned residential development zone, maybe this is for a great benefit for the audience, and I'll try to quickly go over this, but it's, it's to encourage imaginative, creative, and efficient utilization of land by establishing development standards that provide design flexibility, allow integration of mutually compatible residential uses, and encourage consolidation of open spaces, clustering of dwelling units, and optimal land planning. A planned residential development should also incorporate a common architectural design theme throughout the project that provides variety and architectural compatibility, as opposed to a development of individual unrelated buildings located on separate unrelated lots. So you see, we, we have kind of the language of, well, we want it to be the same but different, so it's rather subjective, um, this planned residential development. But here the, some intent, so the intentions of the planned residential development zone is to create a more attractive and desirable environment in the city, as opposed to just the standard zoning, to allow a variety of uses and structures, and to encourage, encourage imaginative concepts in the design of neighborhood housing and mixed-use projects, three, provide flexibility in the location of buildings on the land, four, facilitate and encourage social and community interaction and activity among those who live within a neighborhood, five, encourage the creation of a distinctive visual character and identity for each planned development, six, produce a balanced and coordinated mixture of uses and related public and private facilities, seven, encourage a broad range of housing types, including owner and renter occupied units, single-family detached dwellings and multiple-family structures, as well as other structural types, eight, preserve and take the greatest possible aesthetic advantage of existing trees and other natural site features, and in order to do so, minimize the amount of grading necessary for construction of a development, nine, encourage and, and provide for open s- land for the general benefit of the community and public at large as places for recreation and social activity, ten, achieve physical and aesthetic integration of uses and activities within each development. Hold on, I appreciate your patience, but I think, hopefully this is a good education for all of us. Eleven, encourage and provide for development of comprehensive pedestrian circulation networks, separation from vehicular roadways in order to create linkages between residential areas, open spaces, recreational areas, and public facilities, thereby minimizing reliance on the automobile as a means of transportation. Twelve, since many of the purposes for planned residential development zones can best be realized in large-scale developments, development on a large planned scale is encouraged. Thirteen, achieve safety, convenience, and amenity for the residents of each planned residential development and the residents of neighboring areas. And finally, fourteen, assure compatibility and coordination of each development with existing and proposed surrounding land uses. So here's some criteria that need to be met. The city council needs to make determination that this conceptual development plan is consistent with the purpose and the intent of this planned residential development zone, which I, we just, just read. Second, that it's not in conflict with any applicable element of the city general plan, and three, when you approve this conceptual development plan, you're essentially approving the, the drawing of a concept plan. So here are some conditions of approval that the city council can impose. One, the applicant has the financial capacity to carry out the proposed project. Three, the development will be planned as one integrated land use rather than as an aggregate, aggregation of individual and unrelated buildings, uses, or developments, and three, the development as planned and shown in the concept development plan will accomplish the purpose and intent of this article. And as we mentioned before, uh, this zoning, should the city council approve this rezone, is good for a two-year period, uh, or we have two years, the city does, with the applicant to enter into a, a development agreement, if you will, with the preliminary development plan. So if it does not occur within two years, the city council can meet and say, well, it's reverting back to the original zoning. So it's a time-sensitive rezone. Here's the location of the proposed development along thirteen hundred west. And this is seventy-eight hundred south. This is the Gardner Village area, and this is the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility. It's approximately nine point four seven acres, and the proposed land use plan change would be from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and the proposed zoning would be from RR da- dash point five D to PRDM, the M stands for medium density, with a senior housing overlay. Here's an aerial view of the proposed rezone area. This is the planning commission's approved concept plan, uh, they, they agreed to in June fifth with the, I guess, the marching orders for staff to meet with the applicant to make it even more compatible with, uh, the intent of the, the general plan, land use ordinance, and also, uh, in compliance with city regulations. So staff with the city traffic engineer and the regular engineer and our fire department met with the applicant and discussed some of the, the various concerns with this conceptual plan, and as a result of those discussions, the applicant has modified their conceptual plan that was approved on June twelfth with this conceptual development plan, this is dated June twelfth. And w- w- we have walkability from the colossal apartments down this area with, uh, some walking trails through the senior housing overlay district. Here's another existing, well, proposed walkway, and then another trail through these single-family lots to some open space areas. Uh, this open space has a natural year-round drainage, uh, it also has an overhead power line, uh, and has some really pr- terrific views of the valley, there's, it's a pretty good slope that you'll, you'll find along the, the farthest east and north edges of this property. Uh, the proposed development would have an open space, maybe a dog park, um, and have some benches in the area for, for people to rest or to socialize, there's more bench areas down here. Um, so if we look at the, the, the density, the net density for the single-family and for the senior housing overlay and for their overall development, we believe as staff that we're within the ballpark, that this meets the criteria of, or the intent of land use ordinance for planned residential development, but it's your, uh, responsibility or opportunity to, uh, make that decision as a city, is if this is a conceptual plan that's worthy to, uh, continue on with it, with the applicant, to further refine what amenities would be, what the architectural design would be, um, if, uh, if there's some proposed changes, you know, that's the idea of the concept, is that, well, this isn't set in stone per se, but when we get into a development agreement, we will need to be very specific about the lighting, uh, the footprint of the senior housing overlay for each building, and also for the, for each dwelling for the single-family, so it gets very particular with the next steps with this planned residential development. And here's some conceptual architectural renderings that the applicant has provided for the single-family dwellings. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address those at this time.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get into the public hearing, I do have a couple of questions. That list you had of several different criteria that we're trying to meet, can you roll that list back up? There was like twelve or seventeen different items before that. There, whoop, that's it, hold it, that's it, go back to number eight. I think number eight is a very good one for that location, I can see that filling in that spot. I'm concerned about being able to get a lot on some of those steep areas, but I can see that there are some natural things that they're going to take, could take advantage of and make that a, a great spot. Now, if we drop down to number eleven, right there, how is that path that goes through the park and down in the middle going to help keep people from walking, I mean, driving? Is, is, is it going to minimize the reliance of an automobile as used as transportation? How will the paths that they have prescribed reduce transportation use with the vehicle?
Um, just to the south of this area is in the transit-oriented zone where the colossal apartments are, and that's located right by a track station. So the intent is to have some connectivity or a walking path between this development to the colossal's development, let's see if we have a, an aerial show.
The path on the bottom or the south end to take them over to the track station?
Yeah, it'd be approximately this air, location, and then there would be a, a driveway that they could walk down, and a bridge going over to the Gardner Village, where they could, you know, shop and also access the, the track station.
Okay, so the other paths are there, just there for convenience?
Well, yes, and, uh, with trail development, it's, it's always good to have, uh, uh, something looped, people are likely to use it than just to go to the end of the sidewalk and say the sidewalk ends here. So, w- w- I think there's, there's some good intent of this conceptual plan to have some connectivity with, you know, walking trail through the development, particularly the open space.
Okay. Then if I may, if we can go back to that list again, actually, the list after that that had the three criteria on there, right there? Not in conflict with any applicable, not sign, go to the one prior to that then, if you would please? Okay, it's afterwards, go afterwards, I apologize. And then the next one? Right there. Number two, can you explain to me how number two fits in this development?
I think the, the intent is for it to be master-planned, that we can visualize how each component will work with each other component of the development. This is a relatively small size, in my opinion, planned residential development of only, you know, nine and a half acres, so I, I think that the city should take into account how this proposed plan, each element within the nine point four seven acres relates to each other and also relates to the adjacent properties.
Okay, can you tell me how it relates with the adjacent properties then, since it's only the nine something acres?
Sure. So to the north is a research park in the future land use and it's zoned business research, and, uh, immediately to the east is a canal, and to the east of that canal is the Jordan Valley, or the, excuse me, the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility. Um, as staff and planning commission have talked and discussed, we, we feel like it can blend in fairly well, uh, there's really no potential to go further east because of the canal, and the reclamation facility is pl- planning to probably expand in the future in this area. Uh, this is envisioned or owned right now by the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility, so they've kind of purchased this property for a protection zone or buffer, um, maybe from potential nuisances in the, in the future, but we, we, we haven't heard anybody really complain about the, the bad odor too much, so hopefully, I think the prevailing winds are going against the property. Um, thirteen hundred west is, you know, proposed to be a, a fairly major roadway, uh, about half an acre would be dedicated to the right-of-way of thirteen hundred west, should this development go through. Um, and immediately to the south is this colossal, colossal development, so as staff and planning commission, and I'm open to correction, but I, I believe that we, the, the consensus was, or is, that changing it from low-density residential to this medium-density planned residential development, which is approximately three point one to five point five dwelling units per acre, if it's planned well and done well, it could be a, a greater enhancement to the city than leaving it as low-density residential. Uh, as it is, it's, it's kind of an, an island that, I don't know if it, how conducive it is to low-density residential, the lots would have to be pretty large, and I think we could get a better product overall for the community to meet more of the purposes of the general plan by going forward with this conceptual plan than otherwise. We see promise.
And what does the general plan say up to that location?
It calls for it to be low-density residential.
Low-density residential, okay.
That is the future land use, so that's the, kind of the conflict why we're, why we're here.
Very good.
But if you look at the other purposes of the general plan, there's language in there supporting a community or, or neighborhood like, like this is being proposed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, I, I like, I like how it's laid out, I kind of, uh, agree with your assessment of that, and, uh, I'm just trying to weigh a lot of different things, I've, I've driven down thirteen west re- And I'm just trying to weigh a lot of different things. I've, I've driven down Thirteen West recently and kind of stuck in a, in a slower-than-usual traffic. I'll, I'll say that. Um, and I noticed that the, the Colosimo driveway coming out on the 13th is right next to that. To the, yeah, right in there. And there's two parcels. I assume those are single-family homes that have become an island?
This is a single-family home.
And they own the property behind them?
Yes.
Flag lot?
And the proposal is to exclude from the rezon, this single-family home parcel and this parcel that includes a shed, a barn.
Okay, and, and it might not be for you, Kent, but maybe Brian or, or David, but, um, what's, 13th West has a level of service of, of what right now? Is it a C, a B, D?
Dave? And so the level of service for 13th West is 78th and also 78th. And then just across our border, um, the Midvale has, um, approved some height, eight, I think 800 units on 40 acres. And so I, I worry about traffic impacts related to this. But David, I don't know if you've got, if you know off the top of your head the level of service of that intersection or those roads. And, and secondly, uh, was mentioned the timeline of widening 13th. Is that just to remain a, a two-lane with a center turn lane or larger than that and a timeline, possible timeline?
Okay, I'll take a stab at all of that. Um, the, uh, level of service currently is B to C, with, uh, peak hour tending towards, uh, D in some of the intersections right now and E. And depending on if there's any accidents. There is a widening potential along 13th from border to border. We're working right now to, um, work out a scope change with, uh, Wasatch Front Regional Council for the $6 million that we have there in initial funding. It's a joint sponsorship effort between ourselves, UDOT, and, um, uh, Taylorsville, actually. And it will be such as you see down through South Jordan, about an 80-foot right-of-way is what we are trying to attempt to do there. Some of it will only be 70, but it, it's intended to be center turn lane, two lanes in each direction and bike lanes. Bike lanes become really important in that's whole section through the city all the way up to perhaps Winchester where the drive, bike lanes will drop off and go down to the Jordan River Trail. So that UDOT has both complete streets and an offset and an offshoot for Redwood Road and I-15 if either of those facilities go down due to whatever accidents happen at whatever time. 13th is an alternate route through the valley for traffic and heavy traffic during those times. So the timeframe right now is between 2022 and 2024 for the full widening along 13th if I can get the scope change approved.
Okay. Um, I, there, there isn't a freeway access, so I mean, really, at, at 78th and I-15. So really what I see is, um, if they're in their cars because they're not taking tracks, they're either gonna go down to 70th, they're gonna go on 72, they're gonna go to 90th to get to I-15 if they're trying to get downtown. They might walk and take tracks. Those are just my thoughts. So that's, I, I thank you for that. And then I have another question for Brian. On exhibit D, G as in Gary, I gotta find it. It talks about the storm drain runoff as being handled two ways by tapping into the existing service on 13th West and a direct line into the North Jordan Canal. And it doesn't mention in the, in exhibit G, this is page 21 of the packet, not, not of our council packet, but of the, uh, item packet. And I'm just wondering with on, on nine, almost 10 acres, um, with varying capacities in the canal, is the canal gonna be able to handle a hundred-year storm, a 10-year storm, uh, depending on if it's spring and full? Are we creating other issues if it overflows? Is that a possibility?
I, I, I think we'll be okay. Um, I think. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. Well, and I, and I didn't, I didn't give you a heads up. I was gonna ask this, but I don't, I don't like think.
I know. I don't either.
If, if I may, i- if the council decides to move forward, uh, we can make that really clear to, to make that part of the, the application moving forward to, to clearly address that issue.
And, and the only reason I, I, I'm asking is typically in the spring when it's, when it's full and, and the water shares are being used and there's a hundred-year storm that comes, can the canal handle the runoff off the 10 acres? And what it's already carrying and we're not creating a, a future problem. So I just wanted to, uh, to mention that. And that's all I have for right now. Thank you, Mayor.
If I could add a couple of things, the future transportation plan calls for a bike route, you know, through this area. So staff sees these trails as helping facilitate that transportation route. I'm not quite sure how we'll continue through the South Valley Reclamation Area, but that's for a future date. And the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility has mentioned that they've had, I guess, two breaches of the canal. Um, so maybe that is an issue so that we could really look at to address how runoff would be handled on this property so it wouldn't negatively impact the, the canal and, you know, and breach the, impact the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility, so.
And I do know that there are some overflow, overflow structures on the canal, I think along this route, that if so much water goes in there, it goes, it, it goes over down and then into the Jordan River. Along that canal, I think there's a couple of them. And I'm, I think that, that, uh, if it dumps into here, between here and Winchester, there, there is one. So it depends on how much water hits there that, at any point in time. But I do know there is at least one overflow structure that is designed to handle so much water, depending on how much would come here to this side. It's unknown, I think, at this point.
Uh, Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. A question. Um, I know planned community zones we have in the code, a, a minimum size of 50 or 75 acres is kind of the goal on a planned community zone. Being a performance-based zone, does that apply to a PRD zone as well?
There's no minimum for PRD or planned residential development.
Okay, it's just for planned community. And I, and I get, even in the planned community, it's not a hard and fast, right? It's a recommended or it's something along those lines?
Yeah, there, you, you're right, Councilman, uh, Jacob. There used to be a hard, uh, acreage, but, uh, years ago that was, was amended to, to give the council greater flexibility to, to use this in just these types of situations. So i- it's at your discretion.
Okay. And how, is, is PRD specifically addressed in our infill ordinance? And this is kind of an infill-type development. Uh, is PRD specifically referenced in that by?
Not that I'm aware of. But we could look into that.
I was just curious if that was normal or if this is kind of an exception to the rule or if there is a rule?
It seems like it'd be logical that if you wanted to do infill, that you'd want to have, you know, greater maybe capabilities to impose upon a, a development than the regular zoning.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, thank you. I have, uh, thoughts on this, but those are for after, for when we're deliberating. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a quick question about the senior overlays. The senior overlay for every plot of land there or is it just for the townhomes, the, the smaller versions? Like, are we looking at the whole community being 55 plus or just the blue, light blue portion?
Yes, this is, this is where I, I think reasonable minds can disagree. What the intent of the senior housing overlay, if it be take on the overall density versus have their own density. But for purposes of the calculations of this density, the applicant has drawn a line. You can see a gray line right through here. And this delineates between the senior housing overlay and the single-family residential.
Okay. So I'm, I'm 43, so I can't live in the blue area, but I can buy the purple area. Is that, is that what the concept of?
Well, you, the, the requirements for this senior housing overlay is there'd just be one individual in that household that's 55 or older.
I have a few comments for later in the public hearing, but thank you.
Great.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I have a question on if you'll go to the slide that shows the, the roadways that you had up before where it showed the existing neighborhoods across to the west. Yeah, that one. You know, when I'm looking at this and when I'm visualizing 13th, I think you mentioned a half acre is what you were getting on 13th for future roadway.
Five would be dedicated for future right-of-way.
My, my concern is what I, what I've seen both in West Jordan and South Jordan in the last 10 years is we allow homes to be built and then we expand a road, say, oh, I don't know, like Bangor Highway. And then we take homes that have just been built within the last five years and we make those people move. And that would be a concern that I have with this because when I look at this, to me, it would make more sense to take space from the east than the west. Because, because those other homes are, you know, in neighborhoods that are already there and we have more open space. So that, that is a concern that I have that maybe we're allowing them to build too close to that road if the, if the plan is, but maybe I'm not reading it right.
Yeah, maybe to, just to clarify, this line on, is with the proposed expansion of 1300 West. So this is taking into account the expansion?
Of?
1300 West.
Of like?
For?
Four extra lanes and two bike lanes. That much space will be provided and we won't have to have people on the west side of the street leave?
That's my understanding, yes.
That, that is correct. If this does move forward, uh, and it goes to the, the subdivision phase, our engineers will look at that and, and look at the future, uh, right-of-way proposed in our transportation master plan, which I think Mr. Murphy mentioned is 80 feet right-of-way at this location. And we would get that dedication when they subdivide the property, so.
Okay. And then on another slide, it showed a residence within this area and those people are in favor, I'm assuming? Where, where I look at, it looks like there are existing residences on this plot of land. So, and they're, and they're in favor, correct?
There are two dwellings, yes.
Okay.
And I, I don't, I haven't heard any opposition from them.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm hearing that they are the Brinkerhoff's, so then they are in favor, I guess. Okay. All right. And then we keep mentioning the trail that will go through actually another property owner's property. Have, have they given permission? I mean,
We've.
Private property, right? So.
The applicant has met with or talked with the, the owner of the colossal's property about accessing their property through this proposed trail. Right now, they just put up a, a wall. My understanding is that the, uh, the applicant and the colossal owner are agreeing to have an opening in this wall.
And we have like a gentleman's agreement on that or we have a written agreement?
Uh, we have no written agreement.
Okay.
I think that's where we get into the nitty-gritty of how much detail we need at concept versus, you know, this is kind of like the first and second date versus we're working towards engagement.
Really careful on my first date. They can go really bad. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions. Thank you, Kent. I will open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on this issue, please come forward.
Kelvin Green, uh, and I'll give you my address later if you can't figure out where I live. I live in the neighborhood just, uh, to the west of this. And my house would be, uh, and the street that I exit my neighborhood from would be one of those that goes right on 13th West. Uh, when I first looked at the packet again tonight, I was gonna come tell you I'm against the concept plan. And after looking at, uh, Gary's, uh, revised plan, I'm gonna speak in favor of this particular project. I- if you'll notice, out of the planning commission, one of the conditions of the plant, from the planning commission was that the applicant had to rework the, uh, the senior housing overlay to bring it inconsistent with the underlying zone. Based on his numbers and what he's done, the, the, putting the, the, the do, the, the townhomes, the way he's done it, it brings it into the 5.45, which is under the 5.5 of the PRD. And so the whole entire zone does meet the intent of the PRD zone and it is appropriate. I believe it's very appropriate for the area. It's a buffer. It's medium density. It also matches the neighborhoods that I live in. Um, and in fact, most of the house, most of the single-family homes probably have lots bigger than most of the ones in the neighborhood across the street because of the way they're laid out in the R-18 zone that I live in. Uh, so for consistency's sake across the board, i- it's, it's a good zone. It's also a good buffer from the, the Colosmo project. If you remember several years or a couple of years ago, this piece of property was actually taken out of the TSOD that the Colosmo project is in because of the high-density nature of the Colosmo project and because of the, the outspoken nature of the neighborhood that we ended up causing lots of problems for everybody. That it, that this was actually pulled out of the TSOD, TSOD so that we would have this. This is a good fit. We've had other people come in the neighborhood wanting to build 20 units per acre. The, the Colosmo project's 20-something units per acre. This is a good fit. It's a good buffer. The Brinkerhoffs are the ones that own those two pieces of property that look like it's carved out. That's why it's carved out is they're selling their, most of their property, want to subdivide it off and put it in there. I will point out that this, that the infill pro, the infill ordinance doesn't apply to this piece of property. The PRD we've used before for an infill project, but the actual infill ordinance doesn't apply to this because it hasn't been on the market and sat for the 100 years or whatever that the infill ordinance is supposed to have had. Uh, and last but not least, okay, it won't stop. Last but not least, I do want to point out, uh, I don't think we're really concerned about the traffic. The traffic, the traffic won't scale when we put 272 units in Colosmo project. Why did the 13th, 13th, um, intersection realign that? That, that, the 39 homes here are minimal impact on this on the neighborhood? And I would ask you to vote for this because it's a good addition to our neighborhood.
Jay Thomas, I'm sure you know how to get hold of me if you need me. Um, I'm in support of this too, just like Kelvin said. It's a good fit for our neighborhood. It does bring that buffer to those, excuse my French, god-awful apartment complex that's going right there. The traffic situation can't get any worse. With talking to the developer and they're gonna put the medium turn lane, which actually will alleviate a lot of that traffic. Right now, if somebody wants to turn into my street, it will block up traffic past 78th or on the other side, almost all the way to 70th if nobody gives them the right-of-way and let them turn. This, I think, will help that situation. And if they don't allow those cars to come in, we've had quite, quite a few accidents right there. So I think that will actually help alleviate a little bit of that traffic. The developer actually has been wonderful to work with. He approached us as a neighborhood and had asked us what our opinion was and our input. I've worked with many developers and this is the first time that I can actually say it was a pleasure to work with the developer. Their green space they're putting in there, which we have no green space in that area right now whatsoever. I mean, my kids are all grown up now, so that boat's coming sailed, but I got grandkids now, which now they have a place they can go hang out in the green area. So I think overall it's just a wonderful fit to our neighborhood. I, I think the density is, is appropriate. The senior housing is a good fit with the multiple single-family and the, uh, The senior housing is a good fit with multiple single family and the 55 and over, which yes, I'm in that boat now. So anyway, I just think it would help with our property values. And I would definitely be in very good support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jalen Thomas and I live with that guy. So, but I'm young, I can only buy the purple house. Anyway, the traffic, yeah. Like Kelvin said, that ship is gone when they approved the Colosmo project. So, and then with most of it being senior housing, I mean, there's a lot of seniors that are not working. And so really the impact on traffic is even going to be even less, I would think. Mr. Cannon, actually, like my husband said, he called us and left a message. This is even before he even made application. I think he contacted us three months before he even submitted his application with the city. Leaves a message that says, hey, I want to show you this, this development. I want to get your neighborhood's blessing. Okay. And a lot of you know my distrust for developers because of the Colosmo project. So I thought, hmm, stewed about it for a couple of hours, sent him a text. And he says, hey, you know, we'll show it to you. You know, if there's stuff you don't like, then at least it's a starting point for discussion. Wait, what? So set up a meeting. I tried to get as many neighbors as I could on such short notice. However, I did do my investigation on Mr. Cannon to see what kind of person he really was. My friend who lives in South Jordan was sued by a developer along with a few other residents and Jane and John Does. She spent $400,000 in legal fees to be able to do what I'm doing now to say, hey, I'm for something, I'm against something. And when she said this guy's a straight shooter, then I was like, okay, I'm going to let my guard down, talk to this guy. And he is, he's, we've talked frequently. I've started a Facebook page, so other residents can have access. You know, I made sure his phone number is there. I don't know how many of our neighbors have done that. But, but he's been really great to work with. He's the exception to the rule as far as developers go. You know, he's bounced ideas, hey, what do you think about this? I mentioned the dog park because there's a lot of people who say, hey, we don't have a dog park out this way. Okay, I'll do it. Are you kidding me, really? So there's a lot of things that he's been really receptive to. And I think it's going to be a great addition to our neighborhood. We're going to have a little neighborhood park. It's not just for that neighborhood, so.
Anyone else who would like to address this issue?
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Justin Stoker. I work for the city. I think you've got my address a couple of places. In addition to some of my other responsibilities for the city, I'm currently serving West Jordan as a board member for the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility. Just wanted to add a couple of comments with regards to that facility. They've got some advanced odor technology, odor mediums that's in there that filters out some of the smells that you would typically expect from a wastewater treatment facility. If any of you have ever visited the South Valley Water Reclamation Facility, I think you'd find to be pleasantly surprised the level of odor treatment that happens at that facility. Except for a few times a year when they have to change out the media, not a few times a year, every once in a few years when they change out the filter media, there is hardly any noticeable smell at that facility, even when you're walking through the middle of all of the different treatment buildings. With regards to some of the questions above property that is just north of the subject property, that property is owned by South Valley Water Reclamation Facility. It has been held as a buffer property. South Valley is not looking to sell that property. They do, they have explored some ideas in the long term of using some non-treatment, of placing some non-treatment related buildings in that property. Apparently others outside of the facility have expressed interest in moving the administration building ultimately up to the street rather than putting it behind the gates and stuff that are there to allow easier access to the administration building and the laboratory and engineers. So with regards to some of the questions about storm runoff, our development code does require detention on all of the properties. And so the storm runoff in the subject property will be held to 0.2 CFS per acre per development code, which is in line with what existing runoff should be on undeveloped property. So I don't expect that to change. I expect them to follow the development code with regards to storm detention. So even in a hundred year storm, the runoff that is released from the storm detention shouldn't be any greater than what you'd see in an existing condition. So I just wanted to pass on that information. I heard that there was, it seemed like there was some concerns with regards to the treatment plant. Just wanted to pass on for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am the applicant.
You were going to get an opportunity to speak, so.
I do?
You were. I mean, you turned out you're here instead.
Distinguished council members, Honorable Mayor. I first, I must thank you for your time and your service to the community. I also am fortunate to be a commissioner in Riverton City. And so I know the time that's putting that you put in without a lot of recognition. I appreciate Commissioner's, Commissioner Green's comments. We did go back and after we listened to what the planning commission asked and we got, and we actually reduced the density. We actually took away eight lots. You don't hear that very often. Because obviously the more lots you have, the more revenue you can get out of it. But we felt like we took the comments and put those into play, knowing that it would make an overall better project. My name's Gary Cannon. I live at 1397 West, 134 South in Riverton, Utah. More importantly, I'm a 20-year business owner in the city of West Jordan. My office is on 989 South 1300 West, a property that I'm proud to say my grandparents farmed. They moved there in 1935 and paid $150 an acre for the property. So there is blood in the soil where I come from. I'm also, there's been a lot to talk about the Chamber of Commerce. I am a proud member of the West Jordan City Chamber of Commerce. I love what they do for the community and they've done a lot for my business. I want to bring this all in and I appreciate the time. I'm not going to take all of it, but I have got to recognize your city staff. This is, we've been working on this for six months. The revisions you see today are the fifth revisions that we've gotten to this point. We've realigned roads to match up with the community across the street. I'm very flattered and proud to be friends with the people who came here tonight and spoke. We do have a great relationship and we did reach out to them as a neighborhood prior to even making an application because we wanted to know that we had, we had their support before we started. You know me, I've stood in front of you quite a bit over the last couple of years with other projects, but I'm not a numbers guy, but I'm a statistics guy. And I want to give you a couple of statistics here. A lot of you know them, but redundancy, I'm proud to, that's my middle name. Right now in the United States, 10,000, 10,000 people are turning 65 every day. 10,000 are turning 65 every day. 90% of those 10,000 are having a very difficult time finding a viable option to downsize into. We are so far behind that curb right now. And I want another statistic I want to point out. Just recently, the mortality rate for loneliness surpassed obesity. Now get that. Loneliness just surpassed obesity. I think that's a big statistic. I think part of this product, can we, how do I get to that? Part of this, I'm 53 years old. The baby boomers were 1946 to 1964. I was born in 64. This is a, you asked, can I move in there? Well, my thought process, I might move in there and my parents might move across the street from me. Fortunately, both my parents are still alive. The three greatest inquiries right now for the empty nester community is they want, their biggest concerns when buying is they want to be close to restaurants and shops for proximity to them, proximity to public transportation, and walkable, a walkable, walkable community. And third, which I've shared this with a number of you and I handed in my man card five years ago when I bought my five and a half pound shurkey, 80% of their buying decision is based on their pet. All of these townhomes in the empty nester portion of this will have their own yard. They'll have the ability to put in a fence. We've put a dog park in here so they don't have to leave if they don't want to. It's been talked about when we say high density and we say medium density. And the first thing that screams at you is, is a slow income. I can tell you that these townhomes are not going to be cheap. They will probably start around $350,000 to $360,000. This is not a low income community. A big portion of these people will be paying cash or doing the new product out there now as a reverse mortgage. So with that, I would love to field your questions. I appreciate the opportunity and I've got to commend, we worked so hard to get it to this point. They have, we have jumped through so many hoops. I met with an excavator the other day and he says, you've got to get rid of one of these bridges over the stream. And I said, why? And he goes, well, it costs $40,000. I said, it's not going to happen. I says, that's what makes this product unique. It makes it, we have the trail to Gardner Village, which is accessible to the tracks. This is a tough, this is a tough property, I've got to tell you. We've got high voltage power lines along the, gosh dang it. This is a high voltage power line. This is a high voltage power line. This is a year-round stream that there's absolutely no way to change that. It's a natural, it's a natural drainage that's already in place. As you're aware, and everybody seems to be aware of these apartments next door, I was just told by one of the neighbors, they've lived in their home since 1996. They have yet to smell the reclamation. And if you're aware of the properties on the north side of the reclamation, these houses are all five and $600,000 homes. They're beautiful, big homes. People want these big houses with not huge yards anymore. They're spending their time in their park, on the lake, they're watching their grandkids play ball. We feel like this is a very good, very, very good product for the community. And we'd appreciate your support.
Thank you. Do we have some questions for the applicant? First off, I'm going to close the public hearing. So that is now closed. And we'll move to questions for the applicant. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I heard one of the residents mention, I just want to confirm. So this park we're talking about would be open to the public? It wouldn't need to be a member of that community?
It would be open to the public.
Are you planning on doing an HOA in this?
Yes, it will be governed by an HOA that the community will pay for.
In addition to the duplexes?
Pardon me?
It'll cover both the single family homes and the duplexes?
That is correct.
Okay. And then my, my comment or question to you is, well, let me ask you this first. On the duplexes, will there be basements in those?
Yes, there will be.
Okay. So my, my comment is, as I look at this drawing and I see half duplexes, half single family homes, is there a reason why you didn't just make it all senior housing or all single family homes? Why, why the mix in this small area?
We could have and we could have got more lots in there, but we felt like this was a unique enough property where having a mixed use with single family homes as well as that. And I'm not saying that retired people won't, don't have the option to buy the single family lots. That may happen and I anticipate that happening. But the elevations will work better with this type of product than doing townhomes along the canal. I'm also, I'm on the Board of Canal Presidents. We've already been granted permission to put water into the canal.
Another question I have is what besides the houses will attract seniors there? Do you have, I don't see a clubhouse, I don't see a swimming pool, I don't see things that the seniors will place to park their RVs. What is it that's attracting the seniors to that location?
Yard.
The small yard?
And single, and single family living or single level living. In this particular zone, it has to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet and a maximum of two bedrooms on the main. One of the residents needs to be 55 or older to live in the home or own the home.
So have you considered putting a clubhouse with additional amenities?
With this, with this small number, a clubhouse, I've done a number of empty nester communities and for an example, ones with a pool, 15% of the residents use the pool. But 100% of them pay for it. They're going to have their own yard or they're going to have basements. So if they do need additional space, they'll be able to house up within, under their own roof. There's just not enough lots in here to, to put in a clubhouse or a swimming pool.
Do seniors want basements?
No, I don't. It's just, it's an option. I guess they don't have to do it if they don't want to. Slab on gray. It doesn't save, believe it or not, it doesn't save that much money. It's less than $10,000. It's not, it's not a considerable amount.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
On page 20 of 32, it's Exhibit G and it references the park. And it says, "In an effort to reduce and conserve our most valuable resources, water, we will be designing an environmentally friendly, low-water, weed-tolerant exerscape park area that will include grass and trees as well." I want to ensure that what is brought before us is something that's aesthetically pleasing and not a little patch of grass with some trees and a lot of rocks. I really like what the Conservancy Garden is doing with local scapes, using drought tolerant plants. What I, what I wouldn't want to see come before us is a U dots. And I seem to be picking on them a lot tonight. I'm sorry. But one of the things they wanted to put in was a seeded berm. And I think anyone in this room could figure that out. It means it's going to be weeds eventually. So I just want to make sure that what you're planning to put in this park is nice and it's not just, well, you know. So when it comes back, know that I'm looking for more than rocks and trees. That's all I just wanted to give you a heads up on. When I read that, it was like, ah, it makes me a little uncomfortable with the wording. So if you haven't looked at local scapes, maybe go on their website and look at local scapes. They're doing an amazing job with native plants.
I am very, very, we're planning on doing thistle and sagebrush. I'm just kidding.
Well, thistle has beautiful purple flowers.
I, and I'm certainly not bragging here, but I spoke on the Hill this year three times on water conservation. So you can plan on seeing something in there that's going to be very water tolerant but beautiful. But it'll be as directed by the staff.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
I don't know if there's anything like it in the city right now, so.
When it comes back to, if it comes back to us, I just wanted to make sure you had a heads up.
That will be done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick questions. My eyes are bad sometimes, but I don't think they're that bad. I just think I can't read this. The lot sizes, what's the average?
Average 7,800.
And is that .16 or, I can't see the acreage.
I, I can't either.
Okay, maybe I'll get a printed version of this.
We just averaged them out and it ended up, the single family lots were 7,800. We just averaged them out and it ended up, the single family lots were seventy-eight hundred.
Okay.
There's one that's pushing a half acre, but most of them are in that high six, low sevens, I believe.
Okay. And then, uh, I, I've been, uh, watching this with Planning Commission and want to thank Kelvin and the Planning Commission for the hard work they did already before this even came to us. Cause I know that they said, here, take this back and fix it. So thank you for working with them to do that. Um, so previously there were two exits, two entrances. So right now it's gone down to one, is that correct?
That's correct. And the other one will be an emergency crash gate.
So where those three trees are, what's that going to be?
Emergency crash gate for a second entrance. Cause and, and in all fairness to your question, we are very sensitive to traffic entering Thirteenth West. And if we, when we originally started and had that coming out there, it, we felt with the, the staff that it was too close to the Colosimo entrance. So that's why we've got the opportunity for the second entrance for, for safety purposes. But the main entrance lines up with the subdivision across the street to the north.
Okay, so those trees won't be there? The three trees?
Um, I, I, if we can put them there, the best time to plant a trees today and the, uh, second best time is twenty years ago. So I'm going to get as many trees in there as I can. I can.
Then last, the thing, I know we're doing zoning tonight, but, um, that area that says open space, um, and those of you in the audience who know this, that area is basically a gully. But I see here you've got one park up on the top right and then the dog park. Are those eventually going to connect somehow?
There's a trail system, hooking them together.
Cause I can see right now, the only way to get to that park is mainly through that, um, e- entrance over there by the purple area. But it looks like eventually it's going to connect.
Yeah, we've got two entrances to this park. There's one right here.
Okay.
And then this one here, it's kind of, we did a circular, as, as Kent was telling you.
Right.
Uh, kind of wraps around that way. And then this one goes over into the Colosmo. So we will put a gate here, um, with a code on it because we don't, we want to respect the privacy of the community. Uh, and not necessarily want, um, all, all the apartment people, they're welcome to come in there, but they'll have to do it off of Thirteenth West and not access it through there.
So the one thing we always hear is, you promised us a park. I'm sure Councilmember Zach Jacob hears that all the time, you promised us a park. Are these parks going to be created when the subdivision is put in or is it a later concept?
No, that's, they'll be probably done before the houses are built.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, my question's still on the canal and this, and the storm drain runoff. Uh, we had some stats presented, your statistician. I play with numbers, but I'm data driven. Um, and I, and I still worry, even though, even though it's, it's permission and we have calculations that development agreements say we can only have a certain, uh, flow. We still have homes in much more than get flooded basements. And, and so we can say all the numbers and statistics we want, we have permissions and whatnot, but mother nature does what she wants to do. And if it's a hundred year storm, I, I still am worried, um, I ha- I shouldn't say worried. I have a concern that during a hundred year storm, the canal's full, that there's not enough capacity for whatever storm runoff comes off. So that's, that's more just a, a comment, but I haven't heard any data that tells me that, uh, that it has that capacity.
I.
Unless you've got data that tells me.
I don't, I don't have that, I know. And me, I'm, I'm also president of the South Jordan Canal and one hundred percent of the stormwater runoff in Salt Lake County runs into the canals. And, um, you know, as, as it's been pointed out, you know, you've got two hundred and seventy units of apartments right next door with a lot of asphalt. I think we're doing a pretty good job of eliminating asphalt on this one and, and the yards. All, all the, all the lots along the north and along the east will all be walkout basements with incredible views of the, of the power lines, the sewer treatment plant and the Los Angeles front.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody would like to make a motion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I move that we approve ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four regarding a general plan land use map amendment for nine point four seven acres of property from low density residential to medium density residential and rezone from RR dash five D zone to PRD zone for Brinkerhoff Bluffs located at seventy-six fifty-three South thirteen hundred West.
We have a motion. Councilmember Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Whitelock and a second from Councilmember Anderson. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Whitelock?
Mayor, if I could, it's probably best to put in senior housing overlay and clarify the PRD as a medium density. I think that's official language that's in the draft ordinance.
Councilmember Whitelock, is that, uh?
Would you please add those, Melanie? I will, I will, thank you.
Okay.
Did you want to go first?
Councilmember, she's gone. Councilmember Black?
Okay, good. Okay, thank you, Mayor. To give a little bit of history of this area, obviously, those of you who know me know that I live in this area. And, uh, before the Colosmo's project went in, which we've all discussed and in ad nauseam, there was a change in zoning. And that change in zoning allowed that apartment complex to happen. Unfortunately, for those of us who are not fans of the traffic that's going to come from that. However, it is done, it's going to happen and we as, uh, citizens of that area will have to deal with the traffic when it comes. I don't think this is going to be a traffic issue. I am glad that this is going in rather than another three hundred story apartment complex. So I'm glad for that. I'm not a huge fan of the concept, but it's not my land and I'm not going to be living there. Uh, but I do like what the, the builder and the, the developer is putting together. You know, it, I, I'm not a land developer and in, in my eyes and from what I see, I'd rather it be just homes. But if, if these townhomes are what people are looking for, they will buy them, I won't. So that is their decision and not mine. So knowing that, I will, uh, my only worry, and I'll, I'll say this publicly, my only worry is that, just like the Colosmo's project, if we change the zoning, will it remain this concept? Now, that's going to be between the Planning Commission and us as a council to keep the con- concept, make sure the developer stays that way. So I'm hoping that once we change the zoning tonight, or if we approve the zoning change, that the concept will remain like this rather than, oh, well, let's come back and bring a different concept later on. Or we do approve the concept? Well, that's good then, I like that. Thanks, thanks, Councilmember Burton. So I just wanted to say that I will be in favor of the rezone here as, as long as it stays this way. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
My comment is similar to what I expressed earlier. I just feel like we're putting two things in one spot and I would like to just see one or the other. I mean, personally, I, and make, if it's going to be a, a senior housing, the only thing that's making this senior housing is we're calling it that. Nothing else makes it look like a senior housing to me as I look at this. So if we're going to make this a senior housing project, let's make the whole thing a senior housing project, put a clubhouse in there and do some things. Or if we're not, then just make it all single family homes all the way across and let's make it a single family project and accommodate those needs. So I'm, my concern is that and I'm still trying to decide. I'd like to hear some thoughts of that.
Councilmember Whitelock?
And I would like to share a thought with you on that. Um, my parents are deceased, but if, if my mother-in-law needed to live where we could help take care of her, I would much prefer that she live in one of these units and I live in a purple one. And then I can go over and I can check on her in the morning and the afternoon and then my husband could check on her in the evening. So I do see where this could be very helpful to families because it's hard for an older person to give up their independence. And it's hard for the family that still has children at home especially, to have that elderly or older person move in with them. So I think this is a perfect blend to give opportunity for those families. It just makes, to me, it just makes sense that then you're there together, but you're not. So, so that would be what I would offer to you is why this would be a good plan.
Councilmember Anderson?
And I'm just going to echo, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to echo Councilmember Whitelock's. Uh, my father's passed away, my, my mother lives in the home they bought when I was seven. And, uh, she calls me up a lot to work on sprinklers, work on the back door. And I have to drive about fifteen minutes to get to her house, fix things. And this would be a, a great way to have her close enough. Now, I don't know that I would have her right across the street, or at least my wife probably wouldn't want her right across the street. But, uh, I s- I see this as very beneficial for families that want to take care of their parents without having them be in the house like a mother-in-law apartment. Um, so I, 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 I like this mix and I kind of like to see more of these type of things.
Thank you, let's vote.
Mayor, ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
About passes six in favor.
Councilmember Lamb?
I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Motion and a second? All in favors, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-minute recess. There's five dollars left.
[inaudible]
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 I'd like to call the meeting back to order if I can get our councilmembers to find themselves. There's, there's Ellen. Okay, we'll move on to public hearing item eight C, receive public input and consider for approval resolution eighteen dash one sixteen, amending the budgets for the general fund, the special revenue funds, the capital projects funds, the enterprise. funds, the capital projects funds, the enterprise funds, and the internal service funds for fiscal year 2017-2018. Bill Piper.
Thanks, Mayor. We have Eric Okeland, the city's budget officer, here to address this item. Thank you.
Budget issues that we're proposing to address with this resolution, we've provided you with a brief explanation of each of the items, and we'll open it to any questions you might have.
Hey, are there any questions for staff? We'll start with Councilmember Jacob.
Just one real quick, one thing, Mayor. The items in the bulleted section of the background discussion, those are already approved and have been acted on by the council. Is that correct? For example, where it says, you know, the city desires to transfer $50,000 for the general fund, meaning reinvestment in Area 1 Fund. We've already done that, and now we just need to ratify that in the budget. Is that what's going on, or is it a little more complicated?
Well, you've already taken actions that facilitated this, and this is addressing specifically the budget portion and mechanics of that.
Right, so there's nothing new. There's no new movements in here that we haven't seen before.
Um...
I hope.
I can't say that would be true for each of the bulleted items, but it would be for several of them.
You don't want to go into any more detail about that?
Here's a spot. Why don't you get on it? No, I'm just kidding. I'm putting you on the spot. Get in.
Um, well, I mean, do you have any, if you have a question about a specific item?
I don't have any specific. I just, several of them look familiar, but not all of them, so that's why I was asking.
Okay, so, so some of them, for instance, we've, we've had police get some grants, or they, they want to spend some money from the, from the federal asset sharing program. You know, I don't know that you've had any interaction with those items previously, but...
Yeah, no, I'm referring more to the ones that say the city desires, or the city has done this. You know, that would be more of something I would think we would have signed off on.
Okay, right. In, in, in general... Yeah, I mean, you've, you've addressed several of the items.
Okay.
Maybe not all of them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I don't know if this question is to Eric, or maybe Chief can answer it. But when we're looking at the police department, it, you know, there are funds that they've, they've got from different places, but then they're putting it, to me, those are one-time funds that they've received. And, but it looks like they're putting them to use for ongoing expenditures, and I hope that's not the case. But I need clarification. So the police department desires to appropriate $80,000 from state asset seizure to police department operating expenditures. That sounds like we're using a one-time funding source to fund ongoing expenses.
Well, the, the, the type of expenses would be ongoing type of expenses, but it, it is a one-time appropriation for this budget year for items of that type. So, so it's, it's not being built into a future budget. It's, it's restricted to spending $80,000 once for whatever they're going to spend it on. Does that make sense?
Yeah, hopefully those are one-time expenses. Okay, then, under Craft Made, is, is there a reason that that's gone up substantially? Couple hundred thousand? Is it because Boeing's in there now? What?
Well, I'm not probably the best person to answer the, the, the reason why. I just, we, we've spent more money than was originally planned, and...
Okay. But I can't, I can't approve money. That's my job if I don't understand where it's at, so...
Yeah, I apologize. I, I just know about this item. So when Craft Made was put in, we asked Craft Made to do certain things, a little bit larger water lines, sewer lines, storm drain lines. And so out of the impact fees that have come in since then, we have moved those monies to put in towards the debt service repayment on the, on the RDA bonds. Now, water and sewer have all been paid in, and we've been trying to pay in to take care of the storm drain part. So this was, when we were trying to get that done prior to the expiration of all those bonds. So I asked the Capital Projects Group, they looked at it, and they could free up $235,000 extra dollars this year to put in for that. We still owed, I want to say, $701,000 to do that. So that's what this is right here. And it's already been sent in to the trustee to early redeem some of those bonds.
Okay, and I probably should know who you are, but I don't?
I'm sorry. I'm Dave Zobel, and the city treasurer.
You're Dave Zobel. Okay, thank you.
You bet. No more questions for staff at this time. Then I will open this issue to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please come to the lectern. Seeing none, I will close the public hearings. And... Councilmember Jacob?
I move to approve Resolution 18...
I move to approve Resolution 18-116.
Councilmember Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob? Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
We'll move to our business items. Business item 9A, discussion and possible action regarding a request to amend the land, future land use map amendment for .88 acres for property located at 1085 West, 90th South, from professional office to low-density residential, and resell from A-5 agricultural five-acre lots to R-1-12, single-family residential 12,000-square-foot minimum lots zone. River Oaks Estates, LC, Robert Barris, applicant, Scott Langford.
Thanks, Mayor. Members of the council, this item is before you tonight because approximately one year ago, the council made a motion to bring this request back, June of 2018, and here we are. We haven't had any interaction with the property owner and applicant through the course of this past year. As we posted this item for, for the agenda tonight, our city clerk, Ms. Briggs, reached out to the property owner, and through that correspondence, we came to realize that they are, that the property owner is in negotiation with a potential office builder. I assume that's these...
That's right.
Yeah, these people here, so... With that, the, the property owners requested that we table this for, for one more month to allow those negotiations to continue forward. And with that, I mean, I can go into all the backstory and the history, but I'll leave it at that and see if there's any questions at this point.
Councilmember Burton has a question.
Well, I really don't have a question. I'm familiar with the back history, and there is a lot, and I would be in favor of that table on it. Would 30 days be sufficient? I just don't want to make it difficult. I don't mind making it a bit longer if they're in the process of making this happen. I'm thrilled that this is what's going to happen over there. That would be really good.
Sure. I, I don't, because I haven't had any conversations with Mr. Barris. I know it's a little out of the ordinary, but, but I suppose you could ask these, these, these gentlemen here.
I'm... Sorry about that.
But that's up to you, Mayor, so...
You're still on there, Councilmember Burton.
I would, okay. Well, I'll, I'll call it good at this point, and when I make the motion, I may make it longer.
Councilmember Whitelock?
So I'm sorry, are you the property owner?
So I'm Steve Anderson. I'm, I represent the seller as his real estate broker.
So you represent the property owner?
The property owner, that's right.
Okay.
And this is Nick Muns, the buyer of the property that we're currently in, under contract with.
Okay. And, and do you feel 30 days will give you enough time?
Yes, 30 days will be sufficient, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
I move to table this until the second meeting in July.
Councilmember Anderson?
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion to the motion.
If you want to make the motion, I will be in concurrence.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vote passes seven, six in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Business item 9B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 18-117 regarding the implementation of water rate increases to increase revenue for the debt service coverage ratio. Bill Piper.
Thanks, Mayor. Dave Zobel, city treasurer, is here to address this item.
Mayor and council, with this particular item, just for background and history, several years ago, there was conversation with the Capital Projects Group and the, and the council and others about water and what needs to be done, specifically the storage of it so that we could avoid some peaking rates that we pay at, at high usage times in the summer months primarily. And at that point in time, they wanted to move forward with trying to take care of that so that we didn't have to pay these extra rates, if you will. And part of that was to install four different water tanks. And there was a couple of different property purchases. Last year, as you remember, hopefully, a couple weren't here, but we did two of those water tanks. So we bonded to do two water tanks and a property purchase. This is the second half of that. So we're looking at two more water tanks and a small property purchase for this one. Along in with that is, we have bond covenants that we need to live to, and that is 1.25 times debt service coverage ratio. So what they want basically is that your operating income exceeds your operating expenses of 1.25 times what your debt service coverage is in a year. And so flowing that through, that's what is, this increase is what's necessary to get our revenue over expenses so that we meet that debt service coverage ratio, so that we can, if you will, go to bond to borrow this money to go out. Now, I know that we didn't meet the advertising requirement, so we're not going to do anything that's permanent tonight. We don't need to pass this resolution at the end, and we'll do that in a couple of weeks when we can get the advertising and all of that. So we're free to have that discussion tonight and, and go through that if you want to.
Mayor and council, it was my suggestion that we use tonight sort of like a work session to narrow down and focus what those issues that will be advertised, so that the public, when they come next time, they'll know exactly what it is you'll be focusing on. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. We have questions from council. So first, Councilmember Burton.
How much of this will be paid for with impact fees?
Well, you can use impact fees, if you will, to make those payments in an accounting transaction. You cannot dedicate impact fees to that debt service payment because it's not a stable enough revenue. So water revenues are, are what the pledge is, if you will, for the bond repayments. But yes, accounting-wise, you can use those to fill in the back. So, and it just depends on what impact fees come in and, and where that is.
So you could use the fees to cover it, then use impact, initial payment fees to cover an impact fee?
Right, but...
To come in the back.
But remember how we started this was, at the present time, that was to take care of peaking. That's your existing condition. That's not new homes and so forth. So there's a big calculation, and I respect the way they have to go through all of that in the engineering department, but yes, that can be done.
So since we're doing this to take care of those peak fees, the whole purpose of this is to reduce our cost, our peak cost, and reduce the cost that we have to pay for the water. So if we're reducing the cost we pay for water, can we use the future savings to help pay for this?
You can, yes.
Can we do that without having to raise the rates at this time?
And I would say that, you know, that all depend, no. You know, but, well, and my point to that is, is that you've had more people, this was a couple of years ago. This was a peaking rates that you were being charged in, what, 2016? And you started to build new water tanks in 2017. They're currently under construction and not completed. And now we're talking about moving forward and doing these in, you know, 2018, 19 budget. So you're really, when these get completed, it will have been for the capacity and hopefully to get you to a one-to-one ratio in what was 2016 summer. So you'll be at least three years behind.
So what you're saying is we'll reduce the rates now. It'll cost the rates higher now, but we'll reduce it in three years?
Well, and as debt pays off, because that's what this is, a debt service coverage ratio covenant. And so as, and we have an older bond, that as that pays off, then you don't have that kind of restriction. And we'll always do this calculation as we go through.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thanks, Mayor. Dave, so I've, ever since I've been on the council, I've kind of championed for a five-year rate plan and starting somewhere. So I appreciate the work that the engineering team and you have put into this. Over the course of the last three or four months, I've gone through the, the fee schedules of all the water districts, special service districts in Salt Lake County. And at $1.50 per thousand, we're still the lowest. I'll have you know. The next one is South Jordan, which is $1.55, but their base rate's $10 more than West Jordan. Harriman's $1.70, Taybend's $1.87, Granger Hunters $1.57, Sandy's $1.56, up to, up to, well, it varies between 6,000 gallons for the first tier.
And Sandy has a winter/summer rate, so...
Yeah, and Jordan Valley Water is getting rid of their winter/summer differential. It's interesting that on the third tier, where we're $1.98, there, there is an entity that 45,000 gallons or more is $5.67 per 1,000 gallons. So water's kind of all over the place. My desire, though, being on the council, if there was any way to move it to a January to December timeframe, and we only do this once a year, and we mirror for future years whatever Jordan Valley Water is proposing as a rate decrease so that we don't fall behind again, and that we don't impact our businesses. The board, the council will still need to approve the fee schedule every year, but at least there's an idea of what Jordan Valley is going to do with water rates, and, and it's going to climb. But I think that's easier than, than what we did when I first got on the council, which is we do a water rate, six months later, we do another water rate, again, being reactionary. And I want to be proactive and, and plan ahead. And I don't see water decreasing. We have to rethink, and this is, I'm not, I'm monologuing apparently, but I just think we need to get our ordinances in such a way where we're starting to conserve water.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't think, you know, 20 years from now, paying $5 for 1,000 gallons of water on tier one, I don't think is out of the question. And so anyway, I appreciate the work. But what would it cost, or what would the impact be to not do the rate increase effective, I think you had it in August?
It would cost you $1.751 million, and you would push the projects back one fiscal year.
Okay.
So it would now be four years, hence when you tried to take care of it instead of three.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitelock?
So what I'm gleaning is this is really the only way to pay for this. And it's something that the prior council put into place without really how we were going to pay for it, I think. And so now our only option basically is to raise the water rates. Here's my concern is when people ask me to join this team, I said, "Well, I'll go and listen." And a lot of what I would hear when I would come and listen is water rates, sewer rates, going up, going down. So I want to echo Councilman Anderson is, I can understand if we have to do a rate increase. I'm not happy about that, but if we have to, we have to. But we really need to have something set in place so that everyone, so that we as residents and our business partners in the community can plan our budgets for water. Because even though I think Councilmember Burton was alluding to the fact, "Oh, great, once we pay this off, the water rate could go down," don't kid yourself, it's not going down. Water is going to get more expensive. We live in a desert. So that's what I need out of this. You need me to say yes? You need me to say yes, and I need, I need the body that are mostly employees in this room at this point to bring back so that we know where we're going, not just today.
Sure, and that would be great. That is not what's before you. That is not what we'll be bringing in two weeks. And I remember several discussions over about a year-and-a-half period of time where a plan for, I believe it was four years or five years, was proposed and was never accepted, and it was brought back on four or five occasions over that year-and-a-half. So, I mean, you know...
Right, but you have new team players, so you might, you know, maybe that guy in the middle over there could bring it back again.
We'll be happy to do something like that and, you know, try and bring something that, and with your help, try and formulate it to something that you guys can accept, moving forward with a plan like that. But, you know, that's not what we're talking about here, you know, unfortunately.
And I'm correct, though, this is the, really the only way we have to pay for this?
Yes.
Thank you.
One of the things that I remember last year sometime, or maybe before that, that there was a conversation at City Council regarding the water rate increases, and I think it was somebody from Dannen that came forward and said, "Now, we understand we have to pay for the water we use. We would just like to know a little bit more in advance so we can include that in our budgets when we're..." Because they're on a calendar year basis rather than a fiscal year basis like we are. And those businesses out there like to know ahead of time so that they can include that in their budget for the coming year. So that's just something I would like to throw out just for consideration.
Right, and we feel that too, because Dannen calls us and asks us, "What are you going to do?" And so, no, and so to that point, you know, if we, if we know at that time, you know, what we're looking at or in that direction, we do share that with them, you know. And I get the phone calls usually in February, so.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. These comments are more directed towards us as a Council. Seems like every time all of us come up here, there's always some kind of new tax that needs to be implemented, and we need to, this isn't just for businesses, but for citizens too. We all get our West Jordan utility bill in the mail, and I'm just going to throw out an average number, seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars a month. Well, now the water's going to increase. The solid waste is going to increase. We already increased the sewer because we have to fix the sewer plant. Are we going to get to a point where people can't afford to pay their utility bill because we keep on adding more and more to this utility bill? Is it going to get to a point where we're, all of us are going to be paying a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a month? Now, water, we can control. I can turn off my sprinklers. I can conserve water. But they're just, it gets to a point where we're going to have to have this huge utility bill, and if we don't pay it, you're going to be shut off. You can't shut off sewer, you can't shut off certain services, but, so that's my concern. And whenever I hear that we need to add more and, because we need to pay for something, I think we need to be more cautious and see if there's another way, I don't know if we can pay for it a different way or if there's another way to fund these things. I just pray, because I can afford my utility bill right now, but maybe five years from now, I can't. Or maybe the person that lives next door to me can't afford a ten-dollar increase each month on their utility bill. So I just want to be cautious as a Council and as a city as well that we're looking at that utility bill and realizing this isn't a T-Mobile bill or your cellphone bill, that you can't just give them the phone back. This is something they have to pay. And I just want to be careful when we're thinking about this and planning, like you've said many times, Alan. I think we need to have a plan in place because I can't just keep adding to my utility bill and hope that I can pay it in a year or two from now. So just some thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
I'd like to echo what everybody else just said. I pushed my button before they all said it, so I didn't want to give up my place in line in case I had other thoughts. But that spreadsheet that we were looking at last year or the year before with the five-year plan and the graph of the projected expenses and the projected revenues and the reserves, and they're all in this graph, and it was all nice and, you know, when we play with one rate, it would change the lines. That was awesome. I want to see that again. I want to play with that some more. I was very much in favor of a long-term plan when we looked at this before. A five-year plan, hey, this year it's going to be one fifty, next year it's going to be one sixty-five, the year after that it's going to be one seventy-five, the year after that it's going to be one eighty-five, and then we should be good. Something to hang our hat on that we can say, "Look, it's not all going to happen at once, and I don't think we want it all to happen at once." But the previous Council didn't want to look beyond the end of their noses past the current year. I think it's irresponsible to take it one year at a time. So we definitely need to look at that spreadsheet again and implement a plan. And let's, I mean, like Councilmember Whitelock just said, we've got a new team up here, at least partially, three sevenths, whatever percentage that is. So let's, let's take another look at it.
Councilmember Anderson?
I just thought of a question and a comment. Number one, have we communicated with Dannen since they called in February to find out what we're doing, and now we're proposing something in August that's going to affect their budget? Have they been, have we reached out to them actively?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And then my, my other, my other comment, we talked about previous councils, and it's past time where we don't, as a city, are not reactive and that we're proactive. We have a plan, because I echo exactly what Councilmember Lamb is saying, is that tonight we're talking water rates and garbage rates, but, or solid waste rates increases. And the plans that were presented, to me, are the easy, the easy solutions, and I'm not seeing alternatives, you know, it's, it's, so.
Councilman, I was just told by Mr. Stoker that he reached out to the Chamber. The Chamber's already reached out to Dannen, so they're aware of this.
Okay. But maybe not the rates. They just know a rate increase is coming?
Well, they know the rates.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
I see no more comments, so is there a motion to put this off and have a decision in the next council meeting or two council meetings? What was, what was your proposal, Dave?
I think we're coming back on the first meeting in July. Is that right?
That's correct. My assumption, that based on what I'm hearing, that what we've presented is what we'll be advertising for July eleventh's consideration. And if there is something you want to challenge or adjust or address, now's the top opportunity to do so.
The lights all lit up when you said that. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. David, my, my question is, does, this has a proposed start date of August first. Does the first meeting in July give enough time for the staff to implement this with water billing and all those kind of things? I don't know, Dave or Bill or...
Yeah, we, we can put those in pretty quickly. It's not ideal, you know, but we'll try and advertising campaign. Typically, we would put it in the month before, so that, or as soon as we knew, so that everybody knew it was coming. And so as to avoid the problem we had last year where the implementation date is different for our four different quadrants within the city, we will address and make certain that when this implementation takes place, it will be one that's straight across the board. It won't be implemented, and then some people get the benefit of having a later collection date. We'll make sure that it happens so across the board, everyone's treated the same.
Okay. Thank you, David. Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Did I hear right that you want us to look at the entire fee schedule for the next meeting? In other words, if there's anything, one thing I want to do before we decide on raising property taxes or not is to go through the fee schedule and to see what needs to be adjusted and what general funds that needs to play with. That's just water. I mean, do we want to look at, I mean, I want to look at animal impound rates, for example.
We are, we are in the process of doing that. We have met this last week. We have business licensing going through the study that you guys have already adopted. They're adjusting those numbers just to ones that, the ones that they think are appropriate are leaving the same. The ones that they feel are low, they're adjusting, and the ones that are, they feel are high, they're adjusting. So we're not looking to do one thing in, across the board. We're looking to get them right. And then, at the same time, we are reviewing the entire fee schedule. Larry Montgomery's been tasked with that. He's reached out to all the department heads. They're getting them all their fees for each department. They're reviewing all of their fees. They're getting it to him. He's collecting it. All the department heads are to have those turned in by Monday the second, so in three days.
So all of those will be on the...
That's the goal.
On the board. Okay, I, again, I want animal impound fees and associated fees with that?
That has gone to all department heads in all departments. We should be getting everyone's rates, and it should be coming up from everywhere.
I'm just throwing that specific one out there. I've got about five more that I really want to look at, but hey, you're on it.
Councilmember Burton?
So these numbers that we're looking at today, I would like to see some adjustments before we vote on them, but I don't know what those adjustments are yet, but I would like to be in contact with you the next week or two, even though it's a Fourth of July week or something, prior so we can have some... Because I want more choices than what's right here, and I want to understand better what options are, if there are some other options we can do and how we can implement those.
We can try to do that. The options are going to be limited in this regard, the water, but we certainly can try.
And then if we're looking at all the other fees as well, I definitely want to look at those prior to just carte blanche of approving them.
And I have all of your emails, and you will be getting this spreadsheet.
Thank you.
So do we need to do anything emotion-wise, or do we just...
Oh, what we're going to do at this point is what is in front of you. We will advertise, probably arrange tomorrow. Ms. Briggs will get that advertised, so we meet the fourteen-day notice well in advance of the July eleventh date.
Okay. Councilmember Whitelock?
I, I kind of got some mixed signals about whether Dannen had been informed by the Chamber or not. So can, can you just make sure that has happened, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to business item nine C. Discussion and possible action, Resolution eighteen dash one eighteen regarding the implementation of solid waste increases to increase revenue for tipping fees at the Transjordan landfill. Bill Piper?
Thanks, Mayor. Justin Stoker is here to address this item.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council. Earlier this year, the City Council approved a contract for Ace Disposal to update our garbage collection and hauling contract. With that contract, saw an increase of rates. And so we have proposed an increase to the garbage collection rate to accommodate not only Ace Disposal's contract, but an increase to the tipping rates that the landfill's charging us. In our analysis, we found that we're already on a downward trend with our solid waste fund. With a raise of about twenty-three percent, we can right that ship before it hits zero and accommodate those increases that we see. With about a twenty-five percent increase, we can get that to bounce back a little bit to be able to recover some fund balance in that fund. I've heard what the Council said with regards to providing options. So in the staff report, you'll notice that there are a list of items in there that the city currently provides as services to the residents, including the neighborhood cleanup program, Christmas tree collection, glass recycling, those typical, those typical items. The way that the RFP or the contract is written with Ace Disposal is we can basically tell them not to do that service, and then they don't charge us for it. So we do have some flexibility with that if the Council wishes to eliminate a service. If they want to redefine a service, it may require a change in the contract, but it's something that all parties are willing to do. So in, with, similar to the previous item, this item is a business item to be able to discuss and receive feedback with regards to what kind of changes, if any, you would like to see, so we can come back at the next meeting and evaluate what we need to do to properly fund our solid waste fund.
Thank you. We do have questions, starting with Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. So my, my quick question, and I've seen a lot of information recently about the recycle programs, not only here in West Jordan, but I guess the whole United States.
Yes, indeed.
Obviously, there's a cost to pick up recycle. In the past, our city kind of benefited from it. There was a little bit when they came back. I know that's gone, and that doesn't concern me. But what does concern me is, are we recycling or not? It seems like we have these garbage trucks that come through, and they pick up the blue cans, and they go in there, and they go off, and they're recycled magically. Or are they? So do we have any updates from Ace and any other recycle? It sounds like they're not heading overseas anymore, so how much of the recycle is actually ending up being recycled, or how much is going to the landfill now? Do we have a percentage?
It's an excellent question. It's spurred on by Salt Lake County's article that was in the KSL. The contract that we currently have with Ace Disposal, they pick up all of our blue cans, our single-stream recycling cans that's across the city. They take those and they take them to Rocky Mountain Recycling, which is one of the two recycling sorting facilities in the Salt Lake Valley. With the, with the trucks, what they dump there, the Rocky Mountain Recycling does random sampling of the trucks. They sample one out of every ten or one out of every fifteen trucks. And if they feel that the contamination rate is, reaches a certain threshold, and they are the ones that determine that threshold, they reject the whole truck. And at that point, they load all of the material back into the truck, and then they drive it to the landfill, and they dump the landfill. Last I heard is that they're rejecting about thirty percent of our trucks. In an effort to improve that, and part of the new contract with Ace is that they are sending out inspectors to check on recycling cans and try to, to be proactive in eliminating the contamination. They began doing this in June first, so we've actually already seen about a month of activities. We've created a spreadsheet that identifies the properties that have, I guess, been caught with recycling contamination. And what they do is they take a picture of the recycling can, the level of contamination, whether it's tanglers or food contamination really bad or just unwanted recycling items, if it was just garbage. They take a picture of that. It gets emailed to us, usually within a minute or two. And then we have two solid waste workers on our public work staff, and they have educational material, and they go out to the resident, and they say, "We've noticed some material in your recycling bin. These are the allowable recyclable materials." They hand them an information pamphlet. They explain to them what was caught in their can and go through an education discussion with the resident. We do have a three-strike policy with it that's on that education flyer. We do track the people that don't care what they put in their cans, their recycling cans. And so after three noticed violations, after we've noticed and we've visited with them three times, we will pull the blue can from the resident in an effort to try to be proactive with regards to recycling contamination. We want to reduce that thirty percent number. It's one of the highest in the state. And so we would prefer to get it down less than ten, make it more acceptable. To answer the rest of your question, Rocky Mountain Power, or Rocky Mountain Recycling still takes all of that material, and they still do sell it overseas. They're really only able to sell mixed paper and plastics one and two. And so the market is, is becoming thinner. They're still recycling much of that material, not for very much money, though. So...
I mean, the, the whole goal of recycling is to keep it out of the landfill. But if most of it, and you said thirty percent, which is better than I thought it would be. I thought it was higher. But if it's mostly going to the landfill, basically our recycled trucks are just a second garbage truck that we're paying for. So that was my concern, is, is as a resident, am I having to pay for two garbage trucks because the recycle isn't really recycling anymore? And from what I understand, and maybe someone can correct me on this, we don't have a choice. We have to pay for recycling no matter what. Like, I can't call, I don't want to pay for recycling.
That's correct.
Okay. So, yeah, so, so right now, nobody has a choice in West Jordan. You have to have the blue can. It's on your utility bill. You pay for it whether you use it or not. So I just want to make sure, and I don't know how we can do this, and maybe you can help us out on this. How can we make sure that it's still being used as a recycle truck and not a garbage truck? Because if it's just a secondary garbage truck, let's get rid of it. Just have one garbage truck.
Right, and that, and that's part of our efforts to try to reduce contamination, so it really is still a recycle truck.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So if I may, if we get rid of one of them, we want to get rid of the garbage one because the recycle costs less. To have that picked up. Which means we're still having advantage with recycle because it still costs less than regular trash pickup. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Recycle pickup costs less... Recycle pickup costs less than trash pickup, even with the new rates. Is that correct? Look at this rate schedule. The first container of trash is three seventy-five. The green waste, I mean, the recycle is three thirty-five. I know. I'm just saying, if it's the same...
Yes, yes, the unit cost for recycling is less than the unit, than the unit cost for garbage.
So, my question carries on from his, though. Could we put a choice out there for people? Could they choose to have recycling? And if not, we take the blue can away, and they don't ever put that out, and it saves us having to pick it up. Could they choose not to do green waste? If not, we take that away, and they could just do trash, and they could do... Could we make that an option, and would it be financially viable?
It's a great question, and I actually looked into that. In preparation for the staff report, I checked on about a you know, between a half dozen and a dozen different cities to see what they do with regards to charging for services and their solid waste. And I tried to add a little bit of that into the staff report. A lot of cities do charge for different types of things. We are one of three cities that does garbage, green waste, and recycling citywide. Salt Lake City and Provo are the other two. Ironically, they do their own collection and hauling services. Those are the two other cities that do their own collection services. For the other cities that don't, they do allow different opt-in method like you, like you've stated. But the cities that I've talked to that do have opt-in programs are moving away from them. Because for the most part, the truck still has to drive the same route, whether or not there's half as many carts on the street or a third as many carts on the street to be able to go and pick up that material. And so, it doesn't really save any money to be able to change from a mandatory to an opt-in program. And then what you do is you end up, people will have to get a second garbage cart. Because diverting everything to garbage, including green waste to recycling, so it's kind of a wash.
So, carry on from that, then. Sometimes, as I try to be conservative and help the city out, I have very little trash. I have very little recycle. I'm an empty nester now. So, sometimes I just get to put in my neighbors, so it's one less thing for the truck to pick up. Does that save us money? Do we get charged each time it picks up a truck?
Nope. The way that the finances set up currently is the number that's in the staff report, the twenty-four thousand, three forty-seven, is the number of, the estimated number of residential accounts that we have in the city for garbage collection. So those are addressed residents. And so, if, for instance, if I don't need my garbage can picked up this week, say it's not full, I don't put it out. It doesn't change anything. We don't have any sort of counters. There is, the technology exists to put RFI or RF tags on the garbage carts, but we don't do that. What we do is we just pay a flat monthly rate currently, the twelve eighty-three, and that just entitles you to the three cans once a week for the entire month.
And we give that count to them, and they go by the count we give them, I presume?
Right, and so when we add addresses, for instance, when a new development comes in and builds fifty homes, we'll give them the addresses for those new fifty homes, and it increases that count appropriately.
Okay, so, I noticed that in the past, we didn't have to pay for the E-Waste and Shred Event or for the Christmas tree pickup, but now we do?
They were included in the base rates previously. It costs money to perform that service, and so Ace Disposal previously just included it in the other charges. And so, we asked for them to actually itemize that out for the benefit of the council if they wish to eliminate, if you wish to eliminate that program.
So it's not a new charge, it's a broken-out charge?
We took the charge out of a lump sum, and we itemized it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So, so an item that isn't on here is the Mink Farm. And I know that, that you weren't sure, but what I need to know is, are we footing that full bill? Are we sharing that with those owners? And I don't know who will have that information. I would think that Mr. Piper?
I don't know the status of the Mink Farm.
I can, I can speak on that. The dumpster will be dropped off. It's up to them to pay the bill, the Mink Farm.
It's up to them to pay the bill? Okay. And then you mentioned the other recycling, but I'm sure that's because that's in one category. The glass recycling, is it used that much? Are they selling the glass? What's happening with the glass?
So we currently have two collection bins for glass recycling. One is currently at the rodeo grounds, and the other one is out west by the Sycamores at the end of Seventy-eight Hundred South. And they pick those up when they're full. And so, it's kind of only on a as-needed basis that they go and collect those bins. There are a lot of passionate citizens about recycling glass. I frankly think that's really difficult to do, to have to collect your glass and haul it and sort it to a different thing, but there is a number of residents that are pretty passionate about that. Glass recycling, if it is sorted into different colors, the clear, green, and brown, actually is one of the more valuable recyclable materials.
Are there other areas in the county if I wanted to take my glass that I could do that?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know that Sandy does curbside glass pick up in little bins, but I don't, I don't know if the county runs glass collection or not.
There, this is David Bricky. There are several places in Salt Lake City. There is at the Steiner Aquatic Center, two bins. At the mouth of Immigration Canyon, there are four bins. If you'd like me to find some other locations, those are the ones I know about, but I think there are others around.
Are there opportunities for those that want to do glass? Okay, and the Christmas tree pickup, it used to be well, it used to be on Seventieth South and Thirty-two Hundred West at the park. Is it, is it at locations, or is it curbside?
So, the Christmas tree pickup, we have three public locations that we've identified in the contract that they can just drop off their Christmas tree at one of these three public locations, and Ace comes and just collects all the big pile of Christmas trees. It's usually during, the public location is available during the month of January, and curbside is done during a two-week period, the first two weeks in January. So during the first two weeks in January, they do drive a green waste truck around and pick up all of the Christmas trees that are on curbside. Additionally, they go to the three public locations and collect all of the Christmas trees that have been dropped off in public locations.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So just, just looking at this, I had a couple things. So they started, they started looking at residents recycling the first of June. So we've pretty much completed a month. Have they pulled anybody for three violations?
No, not, no. We haven't, we haven't hit three people yet.
Do they have people that are two? I mean, do we know, since they call you, does our staff know who's on their last, their third strike?
We do. I've got the list on my computer. We've got a list of about fifteen to twenty names. We're still in the process of, they gave us a hard copy version of that spreadsheet and then emailed it to me a couple of days ago. I'm not super familiar with it, but we're in the process of making that more seamless, where we're going to put it on on like a OneDrive or something that, that is a little bit more public for us to access.
Okay.
Rather than emailing.
Okay, well, I'm glad it's, it's...
I could definitely provide the spreadsheet if, if interested.
I don't want to know the names. I just, I'm more interested in the numbers. If, you know, they've had four weeks, four pickups now. So just wondering if somebody's already been pulled.
The goal, I think, is through the education, is to help people not contaminate the recycling, not to hit three strikes. So, so far, I know we haven't hit three strikes on anybody. We haven't pulled anybody's cart. We're hoping that all of the people on that list are just one-strikers.
Okay, thank you. The last two that I've got is dealing more with our processes and not directed at an individual or a department, but just imagine. So let me build a tiny bit of the background first. The recycling cost went up forty-one percent with the new contract. The glass recycling roll-offs went thirty-six percent, second container garbage at thirty-nine percent, but I'm not worried about that because I have, I opt into that. A resident would opt into that. So just imagine, if we were doing this a couple of years ago, we're still under the old contract. We could have had, seen a comparison of what the rate increases would be as we got the RFPs coming in. So we would have been aware that we're talking about a rate increase back then rather than today. And how fascinating it would be to read results of a survey that we did of our residents a year in advance that said, "How valuable is recycling to you?" Because now what we're saying is to recycle is going to cost our residents a million bucks. And if they really want to see a twenty-five percent increase in their solid waste, or would they rather just have their recycling go to the dump? Or, and by the way, doing that, I just did some rough calculation. If we stopped recycling, and I'm not proposing we stop recycling, I'm talking about processes. If we stopped the blue can and just did a second garbage can so that everything just got thrown away, we would save a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So it wouldn't be twenty-five percent, now or less. The other, the only two things I think we can deal with is that. And the other one is the neighborhood dumpsters. But I think those should have been options. But imagine, two years ago, when we were talking about doing a new contract, we would have had time to survey residents to say, "What would you like to see? Do you want the neighborhood program?" If you don't make choices, the default answer is a twenty-five percent increase. And we would have had feedback, feedback. There, I think there's a new social media app. But right now, we're discussing a rate increase with staff. There's some chamber people here, but not really public. And we're making a decision on deciding if we're going to raise rate. Do you see where I feel the disconnect and we're being reactionary again? And this is really, while I'm on the council, I would David, we've talked about this. I really want us to stop being a reactive city and plan. What's our solid, so the contract's seven years. What's our solid waste? What are we planning to do seven years from now when this contract is up? Are we going to recycle? The glass recycling is forty-two hundred a year, the east shred is two thousand, Christmas tree pickup, two thousand, but I would have if I'd known that was still in the contract, I would have said, "Nix the Christmas tree, curbside Christmas tree pickup." It doesn't change the rate increase at all, but I think, for me, I think we're talking about recycling and neighborhood dumpsters if we're not going to do a twenty-five percent increase on the residents. But we haven't talked to the residents. We haven't surveyed them. I would argue that the majority of them don't know that we're talking about it tonight. And so that's just, it'll be my continual frustration for at least another let's see, I got six months here and a year next, so I've got eighteen more months at least. And hopefully more, but at least eighteen months where we just have to think different. We got to be different. We got to be a better West Jordan. And plan, plan.
Well, to your point, I mean, we constructed the contract with Ace that we can change it at any time. We can pull services at any time. If we wanted to eliminate recycling, I think we have to give them sixty or ninety days, but we can eliminate recycling as part of our contract. So, we're not locked into seven years of service on any particular item.
Right, but we're talking a fee increase in two weeks, and I don't think we can survey our residents in two weeks and decide what they would like to pay for or not.
I believe we suggested August first for a fee increase. And even then, I think we are, I don't know when we run out of money in solid waste, but it's somewhere like August, October timeframe. So we do have a little bit of time if we want to try to look at that.
In the next two weeks, Brian and Justin and Bill or whoever, Dave, where did Dave go? Budget Dave, did he leave? No.
Dave's a well.
A lot of Daves. Okay. So, maybe I'd like to see is, what's, what's it going to cost us if we don't do anything till January first? Can we, do we have the capability, David Bricky? A lot of Daves. Do we have a capability of surveying residents and saying, "You have a potential of a twenty-five percent solid waste fee increase. How valuable is recycling? How valuable is the dumpster program?"
We do, and Kim Wells has been dying. She's implemented it a couple times. She's used it with you folks. She's used it with the employees. She would be thrilled to implement it for the entire city. Although, can we wait till after July fourth?
Yes, well, what I'm suggesting, we have to do water rates on the eleventh, but can we, can we work on this one and not implement it till January first?
No, no, we can't. If we wait until January first, we'd be approximately three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand in the hole. We go negative in around September, October.
So let's just say thirty percent. I mean, we're just being reactionary, right?
I'm...
Trying to prove a point.
We run out of money this fall.
Okay, thank you. I've said enough.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Whenever we're talking fees and budgets and and property taxes, I feel like Oprah Winfrey, "You get a million dollars, and you get five hundred thousand dollars, and you..." And I feel like we're just handing it out as if we have it to spend, you know? And we don't. One question that I do have, though, on the dumpster program. In our contract with Ace, do we have the option to change services? In other words, to change the dumpster program if we wanted to go with a neighborhood biannual cleanup program like Sandy does? Where, you know, just dump whatever you want on the curb and we'll come pick it up? Something like that. Is that an option? Can we do that?
Yes, we can do that. The contract does require that we give them either sixty or ninety days. I don't remember the right timeframe with that. But with notice, we can renegotiate services.
Okay, cool. So have we looked into that type of a program? That's probably the question I get asked when it comes to solid waste more than anything else, is why don't we do that? Well, we do the dumpster program. Yeah, but why don't we do that? Force everybody to clean out their basement twice a year.
No, we haven't looked into the bulk. Drop all your garbage on the park strip program. We have surveyed people with regards to that, and people think it's ugly, nasty, and distasteful.
It's trashy.
We have looked into switching from thirty-yard roll-offs to what the county does, and they do a shotgun approach of six-yard dumpsters. They go on a rotation where, twice a year, they'll go and drop a half dozen six-yard dumpsters across a neighborhood for a couple of days. And then they'll pick that up and dump it and move on to another neighborhood. We have looked into that. I don't recall the numbers with it. It was an analysis that we were doing on a a related but not identical situation. If I remember correctly, it does save a little bit of money to do something like that. But we were also looking at it as if the city were performing that service. And so, we would have to talk to Ace about that kind of a program and see what that would cost.
Okay, I would just like, I'd like to see options when it comes to the bulk, the bulk waste potential programs that are out there. Whether it's, you know, curbside pickup, whether it's the multiple dumpsters, or even the thirty-foot dumpsters that we got now on a schedule. And you know it's coming to your neighborhood, and it's coming to this street, and it's going to be dropped right here, and it's going to be here. See, I live in an HOA. I don't even get a city water bill. I pay an HOA fee, and it covers my water, my sewer, and my garbage, and my everything. So, I don't get to see this quite the way that everybody else does. But I would, I would be very curious to see what that would look like. The HOA that I live in does call up the city and get a dumpster twice a year. I know when it's coming, and I get ready, and I clean out my basement twice a year, like I was saying. I agree, it looks really trash when that happens, but it's one neighborhood at a time for a couple of days. And it ends up, I think, having a net positive effect because people are trimming their bushes on a schedule because they know when the trash can's coming around. Or, you know, they're cleaning out the junkyard on the side of their house because they know that they can just put it out on the curb this day and have it picked up. So, just, just some thoughts around that. I would like to see the cost comparisons for some of those different programs.
I'm going to jump in here at this time because I think we've had a great deal of discussion regarding this issue. And I think if we can get a survey to go out and get that information back as just as quickly as possible. Council members, I think they can, we can all email to our... uh, council members, I think they can, uh, we can all, uh, email to our city manager some additional suggestions and questions that they might have regarding this issue. But I think that, uh, um, I, I don't know that we're going to accomplish a lot more tonight by continuing to talk about it because we know everybody has some concerns regarding it. And I, and I think options and suggestions out there are probably the best way to, to move forward with this when we come back. That if we have some input from the, from the citizens out there to say, you know, I don't know how many may respond, let's say you get five hundred respondents, and you say, well, thirty percent think you ought to do this, or sixty percent say you ought to do that. That, that would give us as council members some options to look at and some, some help in trying to make the decision that we think that the citizens out there would like to see as well. So this, this is going to probably move ahead like the water. Is that correct? That we're going to bring it back and, and talk about it again back?
Correct, and I will work with Kim tomorrow, uh, in staff meeting to get that implemented. And if we can get it before July fourth, we'll certainly try.
Mayor, may I make a, a point of information? I.
I'm going to start my timer here and you'll have thirty seconds.
I would, I want to make a motion to direct staff to do a couple of things on this item and bring it back in August. So my motion is to continue item, or, uh, resolution eighteen dash one-one-seven. Oh, no, that's the water thing.
One-eight.
One-one-eight, wrong one. Bringing back options on specifically recycling a neighborhood dumpster program at the second meeting in August. Um, and a survey conducted with results. And, and I heard the comment about five hundred residents, that's five hundred more than we have input on now.
Is, I, I, I'm hearing that that might be a little bit long. How about the second meeting in July, is that?
You're not going to get a survey back that quick.
We need to implement rates before the second week.
Is that, that's correct, right?
We can put the rates in whenever we want. We're being recommended to do it in August.
Justin, you comment on that?
I think August would be fine. If we go into September, we run out of money. And then we would either be running negative in the account.
I'd have input.
There's a motion on the table. Second. And there's a second discussion to that motion. So the motion, I think, is to bring back to the second meeting in August, options based on the survey results, is that correct?
Is this in addition to the public hearing?
Just confirming that date with the city council, that's August twenty-second.
Okay.
Is this going to be in addition to the public hearing or is it taking?
This, this is.
So we're going to have the public hearing after this? Because we have to have a public hearing on this, right? So is this in addition to the public hearing?
On that, on that August one, you mean?
May I ask a question of clarification? Um, if we bring it back in August, I think we would bring it back as a public hearing. And we would be looking at a very quick turnaround for a potential rate increase. Rather than doing something like a six weeks or an eight-week notice, where we like to try to inform the residents on the current bill that a rate increase will happen on the next one. But if we wait until the second week in August, we would be looking at an implementation at least in October, maybe November, as an implementation date if, so, and we're willing to do that. I just want to make sure that you have that information.
So if we go negative on the account, how does that get made up?
Uh, it would just, hopefully by the end of the year, by June thirtieth, we would have a positive balance in cash. But as of, you know, short order, September or so, we'd be negative in, in our cash account, so. That's what the rate increase would be.
Okay, any other, any other discussion regarding the motion? And let's vote.
My other discussion was, is this the public hearing meeting you're talking about then, not another me?
It would be, it's a public hearing meeting.
So it's, it's two things. Okay.
And, and just for a quick clarification, anytime we adopt fees, and we do have to annually in July adopt our entire fee schedule in order to assess them. So if we change fees in any way, they always have to be approved and can be implemented only by a public hearing. So that's just for clarification, okay? Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Don't make fun of me. Mayor Writing?
Yes.
I know where you live. Councilmember Lamb?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Absolutely, yes.
Vote passes five to one in favor.
This is item nine D, discussion and possible action. Resolution eighteen dash one nineteen authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the membership and service agreement between the City of West Jordan and the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce on a month-to-month basis, Rob Wall.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, um, just want to first of all clarify that you all received the second staff report and packet that was sent out by email from the recorder's office. Because that's what we're going to be talking about.
Did, did you all hear the question from our city attorney? Okay.
Okay.
Proceed.
Um, on the thirteenth of June, there was a motion to consider approval of an amendment to the current existing contract with the chamber to extend that on a month-to-month basis uh, at the rate in the current contract, which is forty-eight thousand dollars a year. So that would be four thousand dollars a month. The second part of the motion was directing staff, uh, to explore and develop alternatives to the current relationship with the chamber. That was the direction given to staff. Um, so I set about drafting the amendment agreement, uh, and taking into account, uh, what amounted to a concern with the council that there has not been in the past enough collaboration between the chamber and the city to promote not just business, but the overall well-being of the city. And so if you looked at that agreement that we put in the packet, um, and this is the packet that was sent out to you on Friday, there was initial, there was initial, uh, an initial paragraph, uh, in that, uh, in that agreement that talked about a phrase called the mutual interests. And in, in the existing contract with the chamber, let me read you the first paragraph. It says, "The chamber desires to participate in promoting the economic growth and success of business." The new paragraph that I drafted, trying to reflect the sentiment of the council on the thirteenth, was that the chamber and the city desire to mutually participate in promoting six things. And this is all again from discussion and comments that you made during the meeting. Number one, the economic growth of the city. Number two, the success of businesses located within the city. Number three, the location of future business to the city. Number four, the governance philosophy and goals of the city. Number five, the expansion and diversification of the city tax base. And number six, a productive and balanced revenue model for the provision of services to city taxpayers, including both individual residents and business concerns, with the end of assuring the vitality and safety and sustainability of the ci, of the city for the benefit of taxpayers. Now, I know that's a mouthful, but based on the notes and then going back and listening to your discussion on this, I tried to synthesize your comments down to those six things. After I drafted this, and, and then also this agreement included the month-to-month, uh, direction that you'd given the staff. After I drafted this and sent it to, um, or just before I sent it to, uh, the recorder to, or the city manager to be published, I went back and I listened to the minutes of recording again and remembered, realized that I probably should have given you one agreement that simply extended was an amendment to the current contract without changing any provisions, just making it month-to-month. And then the second directive was to begin to explore ideas and options, which was what I started to do by synthesizing down your comments, which are found in the first paragraph. So what I asked, uh, Mr. Bricky to do is to let me draft, send you another agreement, which is what you got yesterday, which is the agreement you discussed two weeks ago. But make, amending it to say month-to-month. So in other words, the current agreement, the one you have in front of you now in the, in the substitute packet, the first document there is called amendment. And all that does is take the agreement that you talked about two weeks ago, which is the current agreement, and amend it to say that that agreement will continue now on a month-to-month basis for a maximum of twelve months. And from your discussion two weeks ago, the intent of that would be if you adopted that, that would then give the staff additional time to develop these alternatives that you had asked for. And then when you were ready to implement something permanently, this month-to-month amendment agreement can be terminated, excuse me, terminated with written prior notice to the, the chamber. And then you can implement whatever new concept you had intended to implement. So my recommendation to you, to be consistent with what you decided last two weeks ago, is to consider first of all whether you want to continue the current contract with the chamber on a month-to-month basis. And if you do, that's what this first agreement does. The second agreement, which was actually the one you got in the original packet, my suggestion is that you not consider that now because first of all, the chamber hasn't seen it other than being in the, the packet because it was simply an attempt to start your thinking and this, this effort of the staff to come up with different ideas for you. But use that as a basis for future discussion. I know that Mr. Anderson has been doing a lot of investigating. I know that several of you have had a number of comments with, or conversations with the city manager about what should the future relationship be. And we'll continue doing that as a staff. Does that make sense? And, and just so it's not too complicated, I don't know how many of you like this. I know some city council members love it, others don't. Both of these agreements, I gave you the clean copy so you could just read it. And I also gave you a red line of the one you saw last week, or two weeks ago. So you could actually see the changes and verify what I've just told you to be the case. So that's the reason that we're two versions of each agreement.
Okay, are you ready for questions?
I am.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. So if I want to implement agreement number one, would the motion say I move to adopt agreement number one? Or how would that be worded?
I.
Would I want to give it a resolution number?
The, uh, the resolution number would be the same number.
The same number. So resolution eighteen dash one-one-nine would be amendment number one?
No, and just say implement the amendment. That's one that extends it month-to-month.
So I move to adopt?
Resolution number.
eighteen dash one nineteen.
Which, to adopt the amendment.
Which would, which adopts the amendment.
Mm-hmm, which is the month-to-month extension.
Correct.
Of the existing contract.
Of the existing contract.
That's my motion.
And just for clarification, sorry, I should wait for the second, sorry, council member.
We have a motion and a second discussion to the motion.
And just to make sure everyone's clear, the only change in that agreement is the month-to-month fee and then a few typographical errors and some formatting changes. Other than that, it is substantively the same agreement that we've been operating under over the past twelve months.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. So is this, this motion is the existing contract just month-to-month? And, I mean, so how, how does that work with the options that the council asked for two weeks ago? Is that?
If I could comment on that, council member and mayor, um, you didn't put a time period on the second part of the motion last two weeks ago to explore options. So my answer to that would be based on the record last week, the, two weeks ago. Unless you give the staff additional direction tonight, the staff will just continue looking at options and at some point, schedule an item to come back to you as a council and talk about what they have developed.
So, so to, to just clarify, we're continuing the same contract that we have month-to-month and the original motion was in two months, staff presents alternatives.
I don't, we'd have to check the minutes. I'm not sure we said two months. I just said, I think it just said to bring options back. But you could certainly give some direction tonight to, to clarify that.
The motion I have written down, that Councilmember McConaughey made on the thirteenth of June, was to direct staff to invi-investigate and bring back a recommendation on a course of action in regards to the Chamber of Comma Commerce contract and direct staff to bring back at the next city council meeting an amendment to the Chamber of Commerce contract to proceed month-to-month until a final determination can be made. So Rob's correct, there was no timeframe.
Okay, but you could certainly ask for one tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great time for another work session. So here we are. Um, I like the idea of a month-to-month right now, but I don't like the idea of a to-be-determined. I don't think it's fair to us as a council or fair to the chamber, as the chamber's here tonight. Um, the chamber does a lot of work for us, they do a lot of great things. I think the question we have tonight is forty-eight thousand dollars, why? I think that's the whole question why we're doing this tonight. Um, so for me, when we say month-to-month, I want to have a timetable of when we're going to make a decision to do a contract for the year, not just say, let's do month-to-month when things come back. So I would like tonight as a council to decide when we're going to have staff bring stuff back to us so that it's not leaving us in the dark and it's not leaving the chamber in the dark either. So we can make a decision in two months or three months rather than TBD.
Well, how many?
Let's have some discussion on that first and then I'll make a friendly amendment.
How much time do you think would be necessary to have that information back to us?
Thanks, Mayor. I would defer that question to Mr. Bricky or Mr. Anderson. Um, I can put the contract together in a weekend if I have to. It's more a question of how long it's going to take staff to continue its exploration and vet the issues and.
Councilmember Burton?
I know.
Instead of amending mine, uh, what I'd like to do is do that and then do a second motion for the second part, keep them as two separate motions. So I'd like to do this as one motion, to keep the contract one month-to-month, and then do a separate motion that has the staff come back in the timeframe that we choose to do the second part that Councilman McConaughey put in his motion.
Well, I think we need to vote on the first motion first, right? And so the motion that's out there again is to use the existing contract as it, as it was for the prior year, only change it to a month-to-month.
So basically just a simple amendment for month-to-month.
And that is, that is the contract that you have in front of you that says at the top amendment. That's drafted and ready to be executed by, by the mayor.
Let's vote on that one.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Lou, pass a six in favor.
Okay, now, Councilmember Burton, you want to make another second motion, and what is that motion?
The second motion will be to create. I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Anderson because he's got some specific goals that you'd like to see have happened and.
So I, th-there, there's a couple of options in talking with Rob Wall and, and David Bricky based on the conversations that we had two weeks ago, which are related to, um, well, like, like South Salt Lake does, the performance is what was mentioned, where they have a budget amount and if they meet certain parameters, um, they earn a portion of that. Um, so I don't know if it's related to that. There's, there are certain things that I've talked to Nancy, um, about that I, that I think the chamber needs to do, uh, related to C-level executives on the board, um, better government action as far as, uh, working with the city and developing pol-policies that help the city progress. Better, better West Jordan, right? Um, however, I think what the council voted two weeks ago, uh, on a five-two vote, uh, was bring back options. So I think your motion, that needs to be probably one of the options. And I don't know what the other options are, but I think.
what the other options are, but I think, I think this other motion just needs to be a date to discuss these options. So that's.
Well, and I think.
I didn't give a date. Well, I, I, I don't know, Kent, how mu, how much time do you need to bring back options?
If we were just going to look at how other chambers are interacting with their local governments and what type of contract structures, that could easily be brought back in, I would say, I'm going to say the first meeting in August, because I'm out of town the 19th through the 1st of July. So I would say the first meeting in August. That would be a pretty simple approach in my mind to get that information. If we wanted to do a more comparative analysis, looking at the numbers of businesses, budget sizes, et cetera, that would take longer. So we'd probably be trickling into the first meeting in September or the end of August. But if you're just looking for options of how other cities are interacting with their local chambers from a contractual basis, that could be done in the first meeting of August.
Okay, and I, I don't think it's our duty to get involved into the, um, I don't want to say the weeds of finances, but they can be weedy, um, of, of different organizations, but the options, I think, and just what, what can we do on the relationships and such? I think first, you said first meeting in August?
Right.
So my motion would be to have.
Kind of, would you rather, would we rather have a direct staff rather than make a motion?
Oh, well, motion to direct staff to bring back alternatives at the first meeting in August with, with Kent and staff or whoever.
August 8th.
August 8th, thank you. That's my motion.
And we had a second on that, didn't we?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion to that motion?
So the only discussion I would like is, that motion is just to bring back options, it's not to make a decision. Do we need to add to that when we want to make a decision on this, or do we want to make this decision after that meeting?
I, I, my opinion is we ought to listen to whatever to come back and then determine when we want to make this.
When to make that decision, yes.
Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes six in favor.
Item 10, remarks. Are there any further remarks before we adjourn to a closed session? Councilmember Burton?
I move to go to closed session and adjourn from there for the purpose stated on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Sure.
The vote passes six in favor.
And we will adjourn from the session, closed session.